The reason that we have this subcommittee appointed by the Chairman Senator Donald Williams, we became very concerned along with all the members of the Way to Meet Committee on the matter of whether we were going to have as a result of an interaction that was at Cascadia where certain people took over the Cascadia institution caused quite a lot of damage and disrupted state programs. We're here to receive testimony for the committee so that they will be aware of the facts more clearly probably than they would give them on the scattered news that we reported without. So I'm calling Subman then with his staff remarks.
This is Chairman members of the committee. Excuse me. At the direction of the Chairman, we've sent out invitations to several individuals who participated in the confrontation that occurred at Cascadia. And namely, these individuals are Mr. William Callahan Superintendent of Cascadia, Milton Birdman Secretary of Department of Social and Health Services, Mr. Bernard Kelly Region Ten Administrator, Ms. Ramona Bennett Chairwoman of the Pualap Tribal Council, Mr. Buck Harmon or Maurice Harmon of DSHS, and Mr. Skip Lee Legal Counsel to the Governor. Each of these individuals had some part in the confrontation that occurred. Mr. Birdman, Mr. Kelly, and Mr. Lee were signatories to the agreement that resulted at the end of the negotiations. Mr. Callahan, of course Superintendent of Cascadia, was the first state individual involved. Mr. Harmon is brought for informational purposes in that he was directly involved in the negotiations in 1961 when this property was deeded to the state from the federal government. Also to be presented to the committee tonight are remarks by staff counsel on the factual material contained in the books before you. And I'm sure the counsel will tell you that he is not an expert in property law, federal law, or Indian treaties and can only remark to the factual material that he finds discrepancies that he finds in there that he can remark to. Several of the items that would be in question, I'm sure are going to be in litigation and will be resolved in court and the counsel can speak to that. The members or the testimony will be presented to the committee by the four people involved in the confrontation itself followed by the information remarks of Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Harmon. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lamon. Mr. Callahan President, forward to tell the committee what you know about the fact of what happened in Cascadia.
In order to, I think, get a more complete picture of what's transpired regarding the facility particularly during the last three years, it's important to go back three years at a time when there was an alleged planned takeover of Cascadia being supposedly planned by the Pualap Tribe. This information was received from police intelligence and once alerted to the plan, we improved the security of the building somewhat and made some contingency plans with the Tacoma Police Department. This fact became known to the news media and was published in the papers over the course of several weeks. In the meantime, nothing that drastic did take place and... Fortunately, the alleged plan to have an armed takeover of the facility three years ago either never existed or did not take place. I cannot be the judge of that. We were very concerned about it at the time. During that process, Mr. Oliver was representing the Governor's Office at a couple of meetings which I attended and subsequently it was learned by us at Cascadia a year later that he had evidently been having some private discussions with tribal representatives also. The situation at that time boiled down to more or less of a token demonstration on the grounds of Cascadia for a single day wherein the tribe erected a few teepees on the lower lawn, some speeches were made, and at the end of the day, they removed their property and left the grounds of the institution. During the next few months, we received requests from the tribe on occasion for various uses of the facility. Upon checking with Olympia particularly Barry Van Laer who was then the supervisor of the Division of Community Services as to how I was to respond to these requests, I was instructed that I should respond to them as I would any request coming from any other social and health services agency in terms of use of our facilities so long as it was not too disruptive to the institutional program. Later dates, meetings were held regarding Pualap Tribal demand that we give them the ground floor infirmary area in order that they might install a medical dental clinic to provide medical and dental care to tribal members in the Tacoma area. In lieu of that taking place, a vacant unit, Building 14 located on the grounds of Cascadia, was discussed through departmental channels as an alternative. It was subsequently decided by the department to prepare a lease agreement for that facility and that it would be leased to the Pualap Tribe to be used as a medical dental clinic. Again, at a later date after that lease had been signed, the department awarded the tribe referendum 29 funds to remodel that facility to be used as a medical dental clinic. And bringing to that pretty much brings us up to date. At the time of the alleged previous planned takeover, Ms. Bennett had told me at the conclusion of their one day on the grounds that they would be back and the next time they wouldn't be leaving. I for one believed her. In the early part of October of this year, a representative from the Pualap Tribe called and requested the use of our auditorium on the fifth floor of Cascadia indicating to me that they were planning an open house to commemorate the opening of their medical dental building, that they had invited several congressmen and federal officials to the function, and they were in need of a place in which they could serve food indoors. I agreed to the use of the facility for that purpose. The open house commenced on 10/23/76 and at about approximately 6:20 PM, I received a telephone call at my home from Mr. Paul Miller, my security supervisor. Mr. Miller informed me that a large group of Indians were still in the building, refused to leave, and had presented him in person of Ramona Bennett and Jim Horton an eviction order from the Pualap Tribe. I asked Mr. Miller how many Indians were there and he responded approximately thirty to forty. I asked if they were armed and he said that several of them were. I asked if any of the staff or children had been hurt and he said no. Mr. Miller told me the Indians wanted me to call people in Olympia and tell them that they, the Indians, were occupying the institution. Mr. Miller also said that they wanted me to come to the institution. I told Mr. Miller I would call Olympia and would then come to Cascadia and I instructed him to have all staff cooperate with the Indians and not to physically resist them. I then called the Tacoma Police Department, spoke to the duty sergeant informing him of what had taken place at Cascadia and that I wanted to talk to Chief Parrett. The sergeant said he would contact Chief Parrett and he asked that I remain at my home telephone number until the chief had called me back. I then called Mr. Van Zant in Olympia, was unable to reach him. I called Mr. Netherlands and was unable to reach him. I then called Mr. Peterson of our department and was informed by his wife that he was at the office. I called his office and there was no answer. I then called Mr. Birdman's home, there was no answer. Subsequently, I was able to get in touch with Mr. Peterson. I apprised Mr. Peterson of what was happening at the institution and Mr. Peterson said that he was expecting Mr. Birdman shortly at his house and instructed me to call him when I found out more about the situation. I informed Mr. Peterson that I was going to go to the police station to meet with Chief Parrett and would then proceed to the institution. After arriving at the police station and talking with Chief Parrett, I attempted to call Ms. Bennett at the institution but the person at the switchboard said she was busy or in a meeting, did not talk with me. She also refused to allow me to speak to Mr. Miller, the shift supervisor on duty. Shortly thereafter, a police officer had been sent to the institution by Chief Parrett, called and said that Ms. Bennett wanted Chief Parrett and me to come to Cascadia, she wanted to talk with me. Prior to leaving for Cascadia, Mr. Netherlands from Olympia arrived and he accompanied us to Cascadia. Our vehicle was stopped at the front gate by armed Indians. When I started to get out of the car, they instructed me to stay in the car that Ramona Bennett had said only Chief Parrett could go to the main building. The Indian in charge instructed the others to quote "cover us" end quote and many accompanied Chief Parrett to the main building. When Chief Parrett returned, he quoted Ms. Bennett as having said that they were armed, that Cascadia was their place, and that they weren't leaving. She also told him that she wanted the children removed from the institution right away and for us to get some buses down there and move them out. I told the Indian security chief subsequently learned his name was Jim Horton again that I wanted to talk to Ramona Bennett but he said I couldn't, she didn't want to talk to me. We returned to the police station and called to make arrangements with the city transit company for six buses and drivers. Captain Allinson of the police department called the transit company and made the arrangements. He indicated that the buses would be ready in thirty to forty minutes. Mr. Netherlands and I agreed that we wanted to move the children and staff as quickly as possible since it was already approximately 8:00 PM. I called Mr. Peterson in Olympia and told him what had happened when we went to Cascadia and that we would have the buses ready in about thirty minutes. He indicated Mr. Birdman was on his way to his house and that Mr. Van Zant was on his way from Olympia to the Tacoma Police Station. Mr. Peterson said he would call when Mr. Birdman arrived and that we should not do anything until we heard from them. Mr. Peterson called again and said that Mr. Birdman wanted me to go to Cascadia and talk with Ramona Bennett. I explained again that I had tried to do so and would try again but that armed Indians would not let me on the ground. A lengthy discussion ensued about the advisability of removing the children and staff from the institution. Mr. Van Zant arrived and also advocated removal of the children and staff and Mr. Birdman and Mr. Peterson concurred. After talking with Mr. Birdman, Mr. Van Zant called Cascadia and was put through to Ms. Bennett. He was unsuccessful in gaining her approval for him to come on the grounds and talk with her. He told her we were bringing the buses down to remove the children and staff. We stayed six buses on Portland Avenue and by this time it was approximately 10:30 PM. We then left the police station and returned to Cascadia. Two buses were allowed on the grounds, we removed two boys' units and two girls' units as well as four young men that were considered highly dangerous. And after the removal of those children, we were informed that Ms. Bennett refused to allow the removal of any more children that night. We were told to return at 8:30 AM Sunday morning, the next morning. The midnight staff coming to relieve, the Cascadia staff on duty inside were refused admission to the grounds and the staff on duty had to remain on duty until the next day. On Sunday, 10/24/76, we returned to Cascadia with the buses at 8:30 AM but were told that no more children or staff could be removed from the institution. Several of us stayed at the front gates throughout the day and the evening talking to parents who had come expecting to visit their children. The day shift was permitted to relieve the Cascadia staff on duty in the institution. We were informed Monday morning we could remove the rest of the children and the staff. Mr. Netherlands was permitted to go into the institution to coordinate the evacuation and he supervised that function while I supervised the staff assembling at the staging of the buses and we remained in radio contact throughout. After the children and the staff were removed from Cascadia, they were relocated at Raymond Hall, Western State Hospital, Green Hill School, Maple Lane School, and Echo Glen. We were permitted to send Mr. Netherlands and two Cascadia staff into the institution to remove case files and business records. By Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday morning, normal program as much as could be done had been resumed for the children in five locations. During the remainder of the week, negotiations continued and on Friday, October 29th, Mr. Birdman called me to come to the institution about 8:00 PM in the evening to view some of the property being discussed in the negotiation. Arriving at Cascadia, Mr. Birdman and I were hurriedly taken from the front gate on foot to the rear of the girls' building where I viewed a piece of property on the other side of the institution road in back of the girls' building and indicated to Mr. Birdman that it was not an essential piece of ground for the operation of the institution. We also discussed the former superintendent's residence located in the front part of the ground and I also indicated that that was not absolutely essential for the operation of the institution program either. I was then told to get in the car, which I did, and they took me directly back to the back gate, or to the front gate, excuse me. Saturday morning, Mr. Birdman contacted me and indicated that some agreement had been concluded, that he would call again when arrangements had been made for us to reoccupy Cascadia that day. After calling several staff together at the juvenile parole office in town, I waited Mr. Birdman's call. When it came, we then proceeded to Cascadia and the majority of the Indians had left the facility and we proceeded with completing the cleanup of the institution. In the late afternoon, we had some concern about security for the facility inasmuch as several of the buildings, their perimeter doors were still broken in and we were concerned about the possibility of vandalism. I contacted the Tacoma Police Department and were informed that they could not provide us with a car on the grounds throughout the night. I subsequently called the State Patrol. After talking to two officers, I requested that they get in contact with Chief Bachoffner or Colonel Hallam and ask either one of them to call me so I could talk with them. A bit later, Colonel Hallam did call me after explaining our plight to him. He went to a great deal of effort to arrange schedules and shifts in the local patrol district so that we could have a State Patrol car on the grounds throughout the night. After the cleanup, by the following Tuesday, we had moved all of the children back into the facility and resumed the program.
I take it, Mr. Callahan, you indicated that you called and called the station and had the Indian children stolen from the grounds for the reason that they were not giving us the...
They were short, had short coverage on that day. It was a weekend night and also it was state property and our responsibility.
Who is charged with the security of that institution?
Well, that's a pretty good question, Senator. I learned the hard way that there is none other than the staff that work at the facility or in the event the Governor should call out the National Guard. The State Patrol disavows any responsibility since they're a highway patrol agency. The Tacoma City Police, while they have come out on individual complaints, we have phoned to them in the past, they indicate that it is state property and the responsibility, prime responsibility rests with the state. The county, of course, indicates that it's not county property, it is state property and the responsibility lies with the state.
That would mean that all our state parts, etc., are not protected by anybody?
I would make that assumption.
You have a commission with the County Sheriff's Office that is with throughout the county, whether you're inside the city limits or not, and the State Patrol has jurisdiction even although they like to not enforce the limits, for example, within the city limits that they see as there, they will enforce it. Same with the City Police as long as it's within the jurisdiction of the city itself, within the geographic territory, then they knew jurisdiction. Many times, the City Police have county commissions at which they're available. I know when University of Washington had that problem, authorized in the person in Oregon, I think, but it was University of Washington Campus Police who stopped an armed robbery in Oregon. They had a problem that no one else had because their jurisdiction, their ability to carry weapons did not exist. We remember that law. I'd like to call favor to avoid the issue. Your, as I understand it, your security officers have no weapons?
No, we have no weapons of any kind within the facility.
You have radios?
We did have, we no longer have them. They were taken.
Where are the radios now?
They disappeared before we got back into the building. They were being used by the Pualap Tribal members in their patrol of the grounds while they occupied the facility.
I wanted to correct that a little bit. I haven't received further information that it is not the Pualap Tribal members that such, that it was small group of the Pualap Tribe, but the name and body of the Pualap Tribal members very much opposed the action took place. I don't want, I don't want the inference to get out that it's the whole Pualap Tribe that were in favor of it, that they were not. There was approximately twenty of them involved. How many, when you were seeing, how many people? Was it all Indians there? Was it Indian society?
Yes, there was a conglomeration of people and there was a constant stream of people coming into the facility and leaving the facility.
My understanding is the call went into the police department about 6:47?
Yes.
Were they advised that there was an armed, there was an interaction going on, that there were armed people in there in a facility for children?
Yes, they were.
And what did you do that day? Did you send a squad out or was it one man?
It's my understanding that they sent one officer out in plain clothes to go to the institution and ascertain in person what he could of the situation and to report back.
The one that went out even though they knew that there were armed people on the grounds of the children's facility? And then about eight o'clock, the chief?
Well, it was prior to eight o'clock. I met with Chief Parrett, I think sometime between seven and 7:30.
My understanding is the sheriff's office had advised that they would be ready and the police had called him in?
I have no knowledge.
Was there in fact a meeting held earlier that day, such as they had indicated they wanted to hold?
My understanding that it was, it did take place. However, I don't think any of the dignitaries who were supposed to have been invited to the affair were there if indeed they were invited. And this went on, as Mr. Miller indicated, subsequently a bit past the time they were scheduled to go. He asked them when they would be ready to leave soon. They were holding a meeting of some kind out in the lobby of the facility and indicated that they would be finished shortly.
And to your knowledge, then there were no, there was no such meeting as indicated there was?
Well, they did have a meeting involving a good many people. Mr. Miller estimates that with all of the coming and going during the day to the meeting that there were probably at one time or another, 200 who attended that function on the fifth floor of the institution.
What types of arms were apparent later that day?
Later that day, sidearms were apparent. Now, when the Indian police under Mr. Horton, at least he indicated they were police, came to the institution, they were requested to check their sidearms with the security staff, which is standard procedure. They did check them and then as they were winding things up, they checked their weapons back out again and I think went out the door and then reentered the institution at the time in which they presented the eviction notice to Mr. Miller.
Were there any arms other than sidearms?
I don't think so at that time. Mr. Miller is present if you wish to talk with him about that later.
Were you the first to wear arms other than sidearms?
I think it was Monday or Tuesday.
Who was that switchboard when you called?
I have no idea, sir.
Did you ask whether it was an employee or...
Oh, I knew it was not an employee.
Is that, has that been the procedure numerous times in the past that these persons would come on the grounds carrying sidearms?
No, sir, this was the first time. In fact, prior to this situation, I was unaware that there were commissioned Indian police officers working for the Pualap Tribe.
At the time that they were relieved of their weapons, did they show their permission?
I don't believe they did, sir.
Did they show any authority to carry guns?
I was not present. Mr. Miller could better speak to that than I.
We'll have Mr. Miller during the中午 to talk about that now. But I, you have completed an inventory and you have a list for the committee of the damages?
Yes, sir.
On cost involved. On cost involved?
I think Mr. Netherland from our Olympia office has brought such a list. I'm familiar with the figures on it.
Are you engaged in any way in hiring specialists?
Me personally?
Staff under your direction?
Yes, our staff did. We did a complete inventory based on our inventory cards, equipment cards, the personal inventory cards for the children and their property. And then, of course, individual staff submitted claims for property which they had in their offices or in their work location which was actually missing.
What's the employees doing during the period of occupation?
Our employees were commuting to the five different locations and running our program and taking care of our children.
For the nearly part, there were certainly several there too when some employees were barred to stay overnight.
Yes, sir.
Next day, Sunday, before Monday, employees started getting people out.
We were able to get four units evacuated Saturday night. Subsequently, we were...
Were the employees held and were they allowed to work with children or...
They provided the basic care for the children in their units, yes, sir. They continued doing their job.
And that would have been primarily a facility maintenance at that stage?
Well, that as well as trying to keep some very upset and distraught children from getting out of control.
Pop, the poppy feeding and the children, they were down there a few days.
Yes. They permitted our food manager, Mr. White, and our cook three, Mr. Meyer, to come into the institution and prepare the meals for the children and the staff and, incidentally, for them also. They also helped Mr. White in the preparation of food.
Your inventory, what was the total of the children?
Total cost, including the repairs to the cars, the personal property losses of the children, state property losses, damages, as well as the staff property losses at Cascadia, totaled between fifty-eight thousand and sixty thousand dollars. I understand...
Fifty and fifty, fifty and fifty-eight thousand.
Fifty-eight to sixty thousand. And I understand that costs from the various institutions where we placed our children totals probably about another twenty thousand dollars. Included in our costs is also the cost for chartering the buses.
Those costs, do they reflect any of the labor costs and consequences?
Yes, they do. They reflect the overtime costs incurred by the institution and our staff commuting to the various institutions where we had located the children and providing three shift, twenty-four hour a day coverage in those facilities.
That time would be the market, should be recovered from the year of table.
The cost to the institution or the state at this time, our particular cost, run about sixty thousand dollars. Where the money is to come from, I've not been told.
You indicated, how many radios were missing?
I believe three are missing.
Three missed, that's the walkie talkies that you had.
Yes.
Have they been replaced?
Not yet, sir.
How are they operating, the security personnel?
Primarily by telephone and intercom.
What, what about the, it was indicated that the, many of the doors were broken in doors and dropped supplies and... Did you get all the keys back?
No, we did not.
What keys are missing?
There are a large number of keys still missing. Many of them are master keys which open both the internal and the external security locks of the institution.
Ramona Bennett was the person that was in charge of the table?
She was the spokesperson.
She was the spokesperson. But she'll be out specified, probably after what keys are... Have the keys been replaced in the lock cage?
No, they have not. We are trying to determine whether or not we can repin the security locks without having to order new units. The units are very expensive. They cost about two to three hundred dollars apiece. And we would probably incur an additional cost of about thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars to replace the locks.
Do you really tell us the nature of the children who are incarcerated at the institution?
Yes. We have a few dependent incorrigible commitments remaining with us. However, well over ninety-five percent of the children in residence at that time were children who were committed by the juvenile courts as delinquents. These are children who had committed one or several felonies or what would be called felonies if they were adults.
Would they be classified as a high-security institution?
Cascadia is the only maximum-security institution within the Bureau of Juvenile Rehabilitation.
Were the people in charge, the table, informed of that?
I'm sure they were well aware of it, sir.
You said they were well aware of what keys were...
Because I had discussed the institution and its program with Ms. Bennett and other representatives of the Puyallup on several occasions during the past few years.
Somewhere along the line, I have told that there were some of the children were locked up in cells, perhaps by a...
Yes, there were. There were four children placed, four youths, placed in an isolation unit on the ground floor. It's a temporary holding unit. There is a complete investigatory report which has been provided to you. Those isolations took place within the operating procedures of the Bureau of Juvenile Rehabilitation. Some of the allegations made to the press at that time were totally false and incorrect. At no time were any of those children handcuffed.
Demonstrators, are you aware of what situation was, what respect those keys?
In what way, Senator? I don't follow the... I, I think that Mr. Miller and staff presence tried to explain. I don't think they bothered to ask.
They didn't deal from the car to the...
Yes, they were. Our staff were permitted to go down and release them and prepare and to return them to their units so that they could prepare to leave the institution. Only one youth from that four was removed from the unit and handcuffed, placed on him in the elevator lobby of the ground floor. That is the young man that we have with us for first-degree homicide.
My understanding then that clear that at present time was no security in the institution, the locks are, are in and out before you have the keys are missing. You have no knowledge where they are?
That is correct.
You ever contact Ramona Bennett?
I contacted Mr. Horton and he returned several sets of keys to me, but we are still missing some. And we've completed our, completed our inventory now. And we will be sending him a list of all of the keys and their identification numbers that are missing, asking his assistance and trying to locate them and return them to us.
That might have the law in common, where they were keyed?
Well, according to law, a locksmith is not supposed to copy them, but I assume anyone could if they wished to.
You were given any special instructions from the department and the agreement associated with respect to the care of the children?
No, with the exception of yesterday, we had a request from Mr. Horton, the Indian police chief, who requested the use of our auditorium for a meeting of about sixty people. They also wanted to use our kitchen facility in order to prepare a meal for a group he labeled the, I think it was the Medicine Creek Treaty Fishery Group. I refused and gave him my reasons for it. He asked that I call Mr. Birdman, which I did. I told Mr. Birdman that I had refused and why. Mr. Birdman talked to Mr. Horton. He subsequently talked to me and asked if I would call Mr. Vanzant or Mr. Netherland in Olympia and discuss my decision. He didn't feel that it would be appropriate for him to overrule it or otherwise. I did call Mr. Netherland. He concurred with my opinion that under the circumstances and what had transpired during the last couple of months, that it would be totally out of the question.
What would you say is the morale of your employees on the day of...
Well, I, first, I'd like to say that they're still doing their job one hundred percent and a very good job at that. They're extremely concerned, they're anxious. We have no notion at this time as to what direction the department, the state intends to take in relation to the program in the facility. There's just not been anything decided or communicated at this time.
The state sometimes would get the children back where they can start it on the program agenda?
I think most of them, within a few days, were pretty well settled down and the event was over as far as they were concerned.
Were you familiar with the details of the agreements that were negotiated or did you in any way enter into the negotiation?
I did not in any way enter into the negotiation. However, when I came back to the institution on Saturday afternoon and did have an opportunity to talk with Ms. Bennett, she did kindly provide me with a copy of that agreement.
That gets her.
Well, she was there. The only copy I have.
What, in your opinion, was the reason for not releasing all the children? We did it.
I really don't know. I could only conjecture. And that would be that perhaps they'd had second thoughts about becoming more vulnerable to some outside force, moving back in to take the institution if the children remained. I have no idea. Perhaps it was also to ensure that someone of authoritative standing from Olympia would sit down and negotiate with them. That's speculation on my part.
Listen to friends who kidnapped the children for hostages?
Well, the children weren't permitted to leave and neither were the staff.
From time to time, of course, the Cascadia exists only to anticipate from the various county juvenile courts. You mentioned the one fellow who was in there who was re-homicided, which is not the slightest thing that we can miss. What's been the effect of intake from the various county juvenile courts since they've occurred? Has the federal office been loaded?
Oh, definitely not. I think we took in well over a hundred children during this past month in November. At the time, we were out of the institution. We received calls from courts all over the state at our headquarters at the Juvenile Parole Office requesting us to take children even at that time.
I know you are an expert in this area. You know that counties don't have the facilities to hold some of the children that you have in the city. Is there any place in the state that is capable, any institution, facility, whatever it be on a community-based basis or state, that is capable of taking these children from the state?
We have two fifteen-bed security units for boys at Green Hill School. We have one sixteen-bed security unit available for girls at Maple Lane. We have one medium-security unit of sixteen beds available at Echo Glen.
They have a waiting list always?
Our juvenile institutions are, are and have been for almost twelve months over capacity in relation to the number of children and the number of rated bed space for those institutions.
Is there any place where you could send the children other, if they, other than receiving them at Cascadia type of children?
Only to the other institutions within the Juvenile Rehabilitation Bureau. Green Hill School, Maple Lane, Echo Glen, the forestry camp.
Do you have a waiting list besides your office?
Yes, they're over capacity.
Are all the children who were at Cascadia returned, including the...
No, Senator. Once our staff got their schedules, they went to the institutions where the kids were housed, resumed the normal, as well as back to the courts at the conclusion of their diagnostic test.
Do you consider any admissions?
Admissions? Yes, we have.
And where are the children, do you already classify them accordingly now?
The present policy of the Bureau of Juvenile Rehabilitation is to try to achieve a ninety-day turnaround time for dependent incorrigible children if they cannot be placed directly from Cascadia back into a community, community setting. We then assign them to a juvenile institution and may endeavor to have them returned to a community placement within ninety days. We're not always successful in doing that. Some of the children are hard to place.
What, what instructions were you given, something to the incident regarding the agreement?
No instructions regarding the agreement.
Well, the process is different way. What instructions were you given regarding the security at the institution?
None.
Obviously, they knew that the police had turned you down and the local police couldn't operate on, regarding their statement, they didn't think you said that, that's what they told you, that they're not operating on, give any protection on the ground, federal state.
Yes.
What about, did they create task force, the government, you know, who works, that is the security? We've got two hundred and twenty-five young people out there, very young people and they just let you hang on the limit and you don't know what you're going to do.
Well, we resumed our, our normal security function, which we've always maintained, which is primarily aimed at internal considerations rather than external concerns. If there is such a task force formed, it's been done without my knowledge.
So Ramona Bennett, her gun's up here at the front door. You've got the same type of security you had before?
Yes, sir. We've known for, ever since the institution opened, that one person with a sidearm could walk into the facility and take it over at any time.
Seems like a great deal of life to something there, but do you have any, any idea what the, or have you entered into the planning with respect to what would be done with these children in the event of such an incident, or in the event the facility was, was turned back, what would be done with such children?
No, I had, with the exception of a very brief, about a fifteen or twenty-minute discussion with Mr. Vanzant in Olympia yesterday.
What was he good to that?
He asked what I would recommend. And I recommended that if the facility did revert to the federal government and subsequently to the Puyallup tribe, that an interim placement facility, perhaps at Western State or some other location, be established until such time as the state constructed an adequate facility designed for the purpose.
How long, Senator?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I tried to guess that, I'm actually surprised, I'm not sure, it's still in the planning phase. In two or three years before you have something constructed like that.
I have been involved in those efforts in the past, Senator, and while I know that what you say is absolutely correct, I don't think it needs to be that way.
Bigger than this figure. What would you do if such an incident were to occur?
Well, the first thing I would do is, again, would be to try to get all the children and the staff out. And my role is not to make state policy and I recognize that. Mine is to implement it.
But you haven't been instructed into what you're to do, so I'm wondering what you might do if you were called in tomorrow?
Well, I've had some practice now. There are a few things I'd hope to do better and some things I probably wouldn't do, but I think we'd cope with it. We wouldn't like having to.
My primary emphasis, I gather, that would be to remove the children.
Remove the children and the staff.
Ordinarily, when you've called the police, would you expect this one officer to respond in a case like this?
Perhaps not in ordinary circumstances, but in my judgment... But in my judgment, these were not ordinary circumstances. And we had people armed in an institution full of children. And, uh, Chief Perret and the other law enforcement officers with whom I dealt throughout this period, I think, were very conscientious and very concerned, uh, about the possibility of any harm coming to the children or any harm, uh, coming to those occupying the institution. It was a very closed situation.
Wouldn't it be your opinion that Wala Wala indicated that they had armed people storming the doors? That you would expect more than one person to respond?
Under those circumstances, I would, yes.
Two hundred and twenty-five young people and there? Expect the police to respond to one person?
Uh, I understood the purpose of sending only one person. It was to ascertain, uh, uh, from a police officer who is trained for that responsibility, uh, to find out exactly what was going on, what was the situation, what was the armed strength of those occupying the facility.
Other questions, I appreciate you. Do you have the inventory that you have to work for?
It hasn't been completed, but we have the total cost. Uh, the typed inventory will be available and will be sent to Mr. Ryan by the end of the week.
Do you have any thoughts to your staff? Do you expect to, what actions they can give them or other?
Yes. Uh, again, not to resist. We don't want any unarmed people killed, uh, or injured. Uh, to take the best care of the children that they could. Uh, at this time, we are trying to, uh, keep our security perimeter, security in the main building and in our living units on the ground as tight as we can, uh, under the circumstances. Uh, however, we don't lose sight of the fact that, uh, we have a lot of master keys floating around in someplace. Uh, and this is nothing new, Senator. For three years, there hasn't been a day go by where I haven't been aware of the vulnerability of the institution and how easily it could be taken over by any group of people. So living with it now is no different.
That's true. I think the institution, that guy who, 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 seventy-year-old resident. When you investigate that, it's too soon to hear what's, uh?
He, uh, received a, a scratch that did not penetrate the chest wall. Uh, we learned of this about two days later when the person, uh, to whom he fled and stayed at their home, called us, notified us that he was there. Uh, this is a, a young man who was in the foster group home operated by Pioneer Group Home, uh, the old superintendent's quarters. Uh, we brought that young man into our office in the Juvenile Parole Office. We had him examined by a physician. Uh, the primary concern was not about the, uh, scratch on his chest, but the individual who, uh, accosted him did fall on top of him. According to the boy, was inebriated and he alleges it was an Indian. Uh, and when this person fell on him, he pinched some nerves, uh, in the arm or shoulder area which deadened the sensations in the feet, in the fingers and the hands. Uh, that has cleared up at this time.
Does the Indian not say that there's a possible child around there? The court was sent over to proper federal authorities. Who are the proper federal authorities?
Uh, the US Marshals Office.
And they're proceeding with weathered up?
I have no knowledge of that.
Thank you. Uh, Ramona Benham? Would you wish to offer your verdict? What went on tonight? Take over Cascadia?
There is one point that would, that would be incorrect about Mr. Callahan's testimony. I believe there were five young people that were removed from that building that, um, were in handcuffs. Uh, Mr. Callahan wasn't there. Um, probably the correct person to ask would have been Paul Miller, who, who was present.
Yes, he has a report on him.
Okay.
How was your removal?
Right. That would be correct. Uh, I would, I would tell you, gentlemen, that it is my firm belief that the P'olap tribe of Indians is the true owner of the facility that is, that is commonly called Cascadia. And we do, we do know it as, pardon me?
How are you going to determine that all the time?
Okay, we, we do know it as, as the Kishman facility. Um, some five years ago, um, myself and other members of the tribe and the consul, um, began working at a reasonable return of the facility to Indian health services or social services. Um, we, we began, uh, at the state level. Had a series of meetings with, um, DSHS personnel, with, um, community people, with, uh, with various, uh, ones who, who represent the interests of the citizens, um...
Ramona, if you go to the nation, if you're not speaking to the citizens, tell us the circumstances, who you met with and what did you do for them?
Well, I, I think you know that the, that there has been some turnover, um, of, of staff people, but most particularly, um, Barry Van Laer of the DSHS. Um, I believe that, uh, Don Horowitz, um, was also in, uh, the Department of Social and Health Services.
That doesn't, it didn't get reelected from Seattle?
I, I don't know what he's doing now. I, I, I tell you, they move around. Um, met with, uh, Doc Adams, um, probably three years ago and two years ago and met with State Senator Day, um, two years ago or three years ago. Um, and, and in all of this, um, these, these Indian people that, that I'm working with, um, many of us are foster parents and we are involved with, with juveniles, with young people, with, uh, correction systems. Um, we have a concern, not just for Indian young people, but for all young people. And, and looking at the use of Cascadia, uh, Kishman, uh, to myself, it's doubly offensive. Uh, one, because there is a pledge or a continuing commitment for that facility to always be used for Indian health purposes. And two, because this program is the only program in this state that provides this diagnostic service. Youngsters who are already traumatized, already isolated and going through separations are brought in many cases completely across the state, removed from whatever emotional support they might have. You know, it might only be a caseworker or an aunt or an uncle or a parent or a brother or sister. You know, whether or not there are children that are put in isolation cells, which in fact is happening, uh, there is an isolation, there is a removal. And so we coupled our two interests.
This is why, you know, this is why you took the gun. You took over the institution because you thought?
No, you're, you're saying I, I took them.
I have a different action.
Okay, well, you asked me what happened and I'm, and I'm answering you. Okay. At, at any rate, at, at any rate, we believe that, we believe that the diagnostic services should be regionalized, that some investment should be made in the, in the future of the community and that these children of whatever race are part of the future. You know, they are, they are future citizens and, and we believe that.
If I, if I might, uh, maybe you have been before, well, the governor and the legislature for years, uh, they're closed up Western State or, excuse me, Northern State for their own, for its own reasons. Uh, I, I remember last March or April when, uh, one of our fellow senators, uh, showed, uh, copies of some correspondence around the lunchroom to the rest of us. The governor wanted to get rid of Cascadia. They're no longer using it for Children's Diagnostic Center. He wrote a letter to Senator Magnuson in Jackson and we came out of our, literally out of our seats because we, you know, we knew there were some children still there. Uh, the, the issue that you're talking about is one that the legislature as a whole had to address well too. And if we've talked about any regionalization or community-based treatment for juveniles, what's happened in other states? You might ask the D'Amico people what they did. They, they cut it out like Dewey sent the, the ships to, uh, the place in Manila with no oil to return.
Mm-hmm.
You're really, by taking over Cascadia, you're rather telling the legislature that we ought to adopt your version of regional or community-based, uh, diagnostic and treatment of the children who are...
Now, see, I, I've not been given an opportunity to continue. Uh, in my travels throughout the state, uh, Department of Social and Health Services and additionally, um, representatives, uh, or legislators, always the answer came back that everyone knows regionalization is a good policy. Everyone also knows that there is a shortage of dollars, dollars to, uh, to do that regionalization because that's not going to be a cheap program. And so I then addressed myself to the federal government, um, moving on into Washington DC, seeking federal dollars to buy out that state interest because there has been an investment. There are a couple of group homes there, there's the gymnasium. There has been an investment and that investment is very close to two million dollars. And so I began actively pursuing those same dollars that the state, people were telling me simply weren't available. Um, we wanted someone from the state to participate with us. No one did. I spent two years traveling to Washington DC, uh, driving at first, uh, flying later, seeking these dollars so that this regionalization could happen and so that the, the, the true intent of the, uh, original laws on, on the Kishman facility could be, uh, respected. Now, this, um, this last year in, uh, Washington DC before the Indian Affairs Subcommittee, uh, the, the response of, uh, of Congress and, and Senate at a federal level was, if the state has been using this facility for seventeen years and all they've put in is one point seven million dollars, that's a very low rent. Now, you know, we know we could have just gone to court, you know, just gone to court and sued. But the ones that would have been burned wouldn't have been you, gentlemen, you know, or the state. It would have been the kids who would have had to have moved then to inadequate facilities instead of the kinds of facilities that are really needed for treatment. And so, you know, when you sue, you know, there's just, you know, one thing for damages, you know, it's a return of a property or it's some kind of a punishment. And it was never our intention to punish anyone. You know, we really felt that there was a federal responsibility and a state need and a tribal need. And so after some five years of continuing correspondence and negotiations, you know, five years, this has been like the, the primary job, you know, of a number of people. Just, just moving in all directions in an effort to permanently resecure a facility that's desperately needed and rightfully owned by Indian people and to provide the support that the state needs to do an adequate job. That's an important job. Now, you know, this, you know, so-called, um, wild-eyed, uh, duty militant takeover, you know, was nothing of the kind. The people that, that served that eviction, um, did so in a unplanned manner. The eviction notice, uh, wasn't prepared until late in the afternoon. The people that served that eviction notice were, uh, myself and, and ladies that are littlers and I am and none of us had any guns. There were no, uh, no guns out, no threats on anyone's life. Um, you know, the, the things that happened there, um, were spontaneous on all, on all sides. We were, um, we met with, um, Paul Miller and we had a number of, of telephone conversations. Uh, we talked with Raymond Hall, which is the Juvenile Center, Youth Service Center here in Tacoma. We talked with the, uh, Seattle Youth Service Center to find out if they could absorb these, uh, one hundred and forty young people.
You said this was unplanned?
That's right.
So we talked with these people?
This was after, no, sir. This was after the eviction had been served. Um, we were assured that, uh, Raymond Hall would, would be able to absorb, uh, seventy of the young people. We first called for buses. We were told that buses would be there, uh, momentarily and time dragged. Um, the first buses, uh, finally arrived. The kids were transported. By the time that first bunch of kids were transported, it was getting close to one or it was after one. You know, people were on the edge of exhaustion. People that get tired do all kinds of crazy things. We said that, that's enough. These kids ought to just go to bed. We had told, uh, we had told our security officers that there would be a shift change earlier in the evening, that the new, uh, the new personnel would be able to come on. The evening staff would be able to leave. The evening staff themselves, it was my understanding, said they thought that the kids should have the continuity of the same staff being there and they asked if they could just stay in the cottages with the kids they were supervising. Um, we had, uh, we had no objection to that. It was, uh, it was Mr. Miller talking to them on the, um, on the intercom or, or going around and talking to them that came back with this report. Um, and so, and so this is what happened. Then the next morning, we were told that, um, the girls had gone to Raymond Hall, that the young gentleman had been taken to, uh, Western State. And this, this was not what we had been told the night before. I talked with, um, Mr. Zinsta or Zin, Zinstrom, something like that, um, and told him that, you know, we know, because we're from here, that Western State is a multipurpose, uh, program, but people from other parts of the state don't know that. And, you know, these kids have got grandparents. They've got relatives that are undoubtedly concerned about them. You know, and, you know, I, I don't know, choosing, choosing between the two, you know, I, you know, myself, I know that, I know that I would be really upset, you know, if I, if I knew that a child of mine had been taken into a mental institution.
Where there were armed Indians.
All right, well, okay, so, so we asked them, you know, is this, you know, can other arrangements be made? Uh, there was, there was a lull in activity for part of the day and then, and then the response, uh, of course, the response was, "It was none of my business," you know, and, and perhaps it isn't. But, uh, at that point, uh, we were then talking with state officials that were saying that they would prefer to negotiate to be returning children, not to be removing children.
I mean?
It was felt that it was more reasonable to be talking about negotiating some kind of a settlement, you know, just, just negotiating, resolving this in some way, you know, getting some kind of a firm commitment and then returning those children. And, you know, what we were, what we were stating, you know, because there is going to be this lag time, was that, um, we were requesting that, uh, Milk Birdman go with us into DC to actively pursue these federal funds, you know, this, uh, one point seven million dollars. Uh, and, and in fact, you know, that, that seemed to be, um, you know, a good idea for us just to be working collectively. a good idea for us just to be working collectively on, on that as one project, uh, and, and at the same time, we were stating that if we secured that title, we'd provide that lease back to the state, you know, at least from the tribe to the state for that phase over time, because it does take time to set up new institutions. And so, we were involved in these negotiations, um, just, just looking for all kinds of options where, where the state could be realizing their dollars and we could be realizing a permanent commitment on this facility, you know, as is guaranteed, uh, by that deed and by, by the federal government. And so, you know, these are all the kinds of things that were happening, but there was, there was no point, um, you know, where people were being held as hostages or being threatened. And in fact, uh, you know, our people were cooking with those cooks. In fact, they were bringing in a lot of food, too.
What was your idea, I mean, I hear you were right, is that any of the children could leave at any time and any of the employees could enter and leave at any time?
No, the children couldn't leave at any time because the, the children are, uh, were confined by the state. You know, I wouldn't let the children go at any time. In fact, there were children asking us to just let them go, you know...
Real concern for the children and the children their own.
Mm-hmm.
But you're, what about the employees now? They were pre-kept, so there was nobody else talking to them?
Anytime they had to make a staff change, they just indicated this to us. Uh, they were provided security to the gate and, and any replacement staff that needed to be coming in, uh, came in. We did ask for a reduced, uh, for a reduced staff, and we did, we did say that we would be taking over some of the kitchen activities.
Not, not that we answered, well...
Not that I'm aware of.
I know what was that then? Okay.
Not by us.
Do you have more to tell us, please?
Well, not unless you have any questions.
Uh, Senator Martin, Senator Woodley, what do you think? Were you, uh, the leader, I guess, that took over?
I do.
Mr. Callahan, is he going to give a name? He has attempted contacting a number of patients, but was refused to allow, but contacted refused, are you aware of that?
Yes. But, but I'm not aware of anyone, uh, keeping, uh, Mr. Miller from contacting anyone. I, I personally didn't, hm? I personally didn't feel that, uh, Mr. Callahan was in a, in a decision-making role, uh, speaking for the state. I knew he had business, uh, with his own staff, and as far as I know, their teleph- their, uh, telephone communication continued.
Really?
Hm? No, on the telephone. See, we, we had telephones until the state had them disconnected on Thursday.
Those phones were manned by your people, were they?
Yes, they were.
And you indicated...
Well, not, not manned, there were some...
Girls?
Yeah, lady.
Uh, you indicated in the first instance that you had, uh, decided to move the children, that you couldn't, that you continued touching women until it got calculated hours.
That's right.
And then, Mr. Callahan has indicated that, uh, the next day, uh, bus fare and all that, that was not touching women properly allowed. So, what was the reason for that?
That, that would be correct. It was, uh, fairly early in the morning when we found out that, that the young gentleman had been removed to Western State Hospital and, and...
Did you ask where such children would be sent or were they sent?
In advance. We wanted to make certain that there were youth service facilities available that could be providing adequate accommodations to these kids.
See, I asked that question too. Did you ask someone where the children would be sent if we released them on Sunday?
Um, with, uh, with Paul Miller, we went on ahead and placed calls, uh, calls were placed to, to both of those institutions. They said they could accommodate the first seventy. The actual count of young people removed that first night was approximately seventy.
What did he indicate is to lose, to say, to find them on Sunday? And if you were to allow them to...
Pardon me?
Did he indicate where and plan to send those, uh, people on Sunday? Was it those today, was you allowing them?
No, it was, I assumed that, uh, that echoed Glen and Maple Lane and, uh, Green Hill Academy and these, these, uh, different juvenile facilities would be, uh, setting up accommodations.
You had no specific information as to where they would be moved on Sunday?
No, I, I assumed they would also be moved to youth, uh, service facilities.
If you had no specific information, why did you not allow them to move on Sunday?
Well, because I assumed all of them were going to be moved to youth service facilities.
Why did you not?
Hm?
Why did you not allow them to move on Sunday?
Because the first bunch of, uh, boys had been taken to Western State, and I wanted to know where the next group of young men were going to be taken.
Why didn't you ask them? Get that, but why didn't you ask? And if you did ask, who did you ask?
The staff people that were there and, uh, and the, the gentleman from, uh, the Tacoma Police Department.
No, who were they going to go?
The night before.
Oh, Sunday. I think it was Sunday, was it, was it allowed or not? I think that's, you know, I don't know.
I think that's right.
Because they waited all day Sunday, the bus, the whole house, and movement was refused.
Well, there were, there were other things that were going on during that day. You know, it was, it was a fairly short period of time after, um, after I asked that, that a special effort be made to find youth service facilities that would accommodate the youngsters that, that the first negotiation started for returning all of the children. And that was, that was through the first meetings with, um, Mr. Birdman.
I only asked on Saturday, you know, and, and that was just through, that was just through Paul Miller and that was just through, um, that was just through the, uh, inspector or investigator for the Tacoma Police Department. I asked if these youngsters were going to be going to youth service centers, specifically Raymond Hall and, uh, the Seattle Youth Service Center. But you...
And the answer was yes, and then the next morning, that had not happened. Something completely different had happened.
And yet, uh, the question again, did you speak to anyone on Sunday to find out where they intended to move those people?
Yes, that was Mr. Zemstra, or I'm, I'm not certain of the gentleman's name, he's from the state juvenile institution.
And he did not indicate where he intended to move them?
Well, no, he said it was none of my business.
Do you think that perhaps, uh, the state would have, uh, not been concerned with where these people were going, much by giving fear that, uh, they might be moved to the wrong place, in fact, in Tacoma, on the same way, that alone?
That, that seemed adequate, yes.
And yes, you did, they no attempt to find out on Sunday where they intended to move them, other than that?
Well, it doesn't do any good to ask if you've already been lied to once. Well, you know, you keep asking people over and over again when you, when you know they're not giving you honest answers.
And the reasons for not, uh, starting a court act, would it have been your, your, how many was in that?
I've been on the council for, well, maybe six years, sure, woman for three years.
The council ever start bringing the action by law to see what the result might be?
Yeah.
Have you ever taken any part of that?
Um...
That's the question, finding a law to respect this question, who rights, uh, these outside of Cascadia?
Pardon me? I don't know if you're asking me a question or...
I'm asking you questions, Senator. The council at any time, you were a member of the council, you should get word on the council to secure. The council at any time takes positive action of any sort and makes a determination to whether they comply legal actions and federal questions.
We, we have had legal research done, yes.
And the council takes formal action?
On the, uh, you know, on, on whether or not to reacquire the facility?
Start lawsuits?
No, there have been a number of actions concerning the re-acquisition of the facility, um...
No determination to whether lawsuits can provide a settlement?
No, the, the approval was to move for congressional relief.
Not having failed, you still may know determination to start legal action?
Uh, there's, there's only been one situation where, where we've asked a lawyer, a qualified lawyer, to, to be representing us.
But not in this filing of such an action, you already asked him as to what he thought your rights might be?
No, we know what our rights are. We, we wanted to make certain that we had an attorney that, uh, that would know how to seek the procedural relief so that neither the state or the federal government would be unnecessarily injured by the conveyance.
I guess really the answer is no. The council never put any red flags on such a question.
Yeah, thank you. How many actions have we taken, Mr. Birdman? Just, just a moment, please. She, she says this a lot better than I do, um, she says that since the state didn't use any legal court action to take it away from us, it wasn't felt that we needed any court action to be re-securing it.
Who, who said that?
Um, Mason Bridges, um, Councilwoman of the Peal Tribe.
Well, and why did you describe me that, uh, there was no action taken with respect to determinations that we take in the acts to recover the property?
There, there have been a thousand actions on this facility, actions going back twenty years, sir, and I have absolutely no idea what the history would be in the fourteen years preceding myself on the council.
You're, you're not a council, you know, no such action?
There have been all kinds of actions to be reacquiring that facility from research, to, to travel to DC, to travel to Olympia.
Going court, asking about legal action?
We've not filed a case. I think that's your...
No, that's the recommendation of the council that you should do so.
Oh, we've always known that we could.
But you never decided to try it? Why not?
Because it's very difficult to file a court case to secure administrative and procedural relief without doing undue damage to innocent parties.
What do you mean by...
Pardon me? I think that the state unknowingly received a stolen property, and I think the state could lose about two million dollars that have been invested there. And I think that the dollars are needed to be helping these kids have their local facilities. Those are the innocent parties. You know, the state citizens are the innocent parties.
Senator Woodley, back when I first started asking you, that's what you wanted to say, now, the best way to stand on here, what were your objectives with your actions? Was it to reverse titles? Talking like a lawyer now, but that's what I'm seeing, that to get title back to the United States government and then to the tribe?
Right.
Or was it to, uh, change the state policy as we handle children? You mentioned a regionalization and, uh, both?
Both.
Well, then I get back to Senator Martin's question, if you're going to do both, to reverse titles, do you got to bring an action? Both is clear for a judgment, but, but if, if we're not using it as the title between the United States government and the state provides, there's some, the power of reversion, um, it's not, I think it's not very harshly wrong, but it's there. If you bring an, an action to determine whether or not the state is no longer using it for the purposes of the state, then the United States government can, has to, can exercise often the power of reversion. Number two, if you want to do the second thing, the United States of Washington, change its policy as we handle its children, aren't you going to the wrong people? Why not come to the legislature and draw all that but words to call to do under the state constitution?
Oh, I, see, I did do that, um, I went to, uh, State Senator Day and I...
One out of the Senate, figure that's number forty-seven.
And, uh, well, I understood that he speaks for the DSH as, uh, Senate Subcommittee, and, um, I presented him with, uh, with some basic legal documents, and I talked to him about regionalization and, um, and he told me that those were all, um, probably worthy projects, but his constituency, um, simply would not tolerate his consideration, uh, of, of any of those projects and, uh, just churned me off, um...
So, that's how you, and the people you represent, can then feel that you can represent the three point two million people in the state of Washington as opposed to the left people?
In what ways is?
Determining what policy is handled with children that are in, types of children in Cascadia, Cascadia.
Well, he, he again was one of the ones that said it's a dollar consideration, it's a dollar consideration. You know, those dollars are critically important, there are going to be...
What Senator Day or President Adams was saying, but why do you feel that you and the people you represent are the people that should be representing the three point two million people in the state of Washington, determining how we handle the types of children that are in Cascadia? That are going in wrong?
That's, that's another item I would correct. Um, I am not aware of ninety-five percent of the children, uh, in that facility being there for felonious, delinquent behavior. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, youngsters who are chronic runaways, uh, youngsters who are, who are truant, uh, youngsters that...
I rejected my last question.
Yeah, youngsters who, who have no family support, you know, find themselves in that facility. Is that right? Well, that's good.
Senator Bell, thirty-one sixteen. Not my idea of...
No, we, see, I, I have had, I, I have had an opportunity, uh, to have extensive communication with the, uh, Kitsap County Juvenile Diagnostic Program, which is a regionalized program. And I, I have seen kids in trouble, have the continuity of that court worker, that case worker, that dependency worker, um, their own family grouping, you know, and I see the follow-through that's done on placements by the same staff. You know, I, I see people who have an opportunity to really know these kids, you know, really do intensive diagnostic services. And I have had an opportunity to compare those programs, you know, all of those programs.
Well, I've been fortunate, but I, I have, but there are those, like the fellow who was then forced to pursue homicide. I got a call from a fellow up in Skomi County because, uh, two of his children locked daddy in the freezer, and unfortunately, a neighbor came by for daddy, wore his stuff, you know. Those are the sorts that you can counsel and, and have, uh, the home relationship because they're going to lock daddy in the freezer again.
We should, uh, you know, you should, you should ask Mr. Callahan or, or ask a number of these people, you know, how many of the young people in that facility really need a maximum security facility and how many of them, how many of them are just sent there, you know, by the court, uh, because Cascadia is used as a state boogeyman and judges, and judges do use it that way. You know, I mean...
Senator Martin, that question... Well, Ramon, I don't believe that you have answered Senator Woodley's question, why you should read your wisdom, have your ideas on an institution to be run. The legislature and their wisdom was right or wrong, because that is the institution where these kids go, that I think. At no time have we said it should be regionalized like we like to have it done. And I'd like you to answer Senator Woodley's... And I'd like you to answer Senator Wood's question. If you set up your philosophy that you run this way against the will of three point two million people, that's pushing left. And I wish you would answer this question twice. I wish you'd answer this question about Rodney Autumn, Senator Wood.
We know that that facility is going to be used for Indian services. You're telling me it's none of my business, and I guess you're right, but I am a parent and I am part of this community too.
Why not come to the legislature and go before the committee? Either get a yes answer or a no answer. I have that bill before Senator Day's committee before and then turned down and turned down and turned down. Keep going back. Well, I get one out of this committee. You were turned down once, but you decided to do it your own. Is that correct?
Well, I didn't go before his committee. I met with him as an individual, you know.
Representative Adams, that's no way, you were turned down.
I met with him as individuals. I didn't go before their committee.
Why didn't you then? That is the way that legislation is proposed and created through the House. It seems to be that you changed the jury for various reasons and then took off your own. You had two reasons, one to reacquire the hospital and one to regionalize the concept of treating these children. Is that correct?
That's correct.
You did that on your own.
Indians have not been enormously successful at communications with state legislature. I, well, I know that too. You know, it doesn't, it didn't seem to be even a reasonable time investment to be going before committees that, you know, I don't want to talk to you about state legislature and how I feel about it. Pardon me? Yes, I've heard of burning white bear. Oh, he's a lot cuter.
Ramona, I agree with you. They're trying to do this to what we came here to find out. To what extent did you pre-plan? How many people did you have on the study?
Everything was spontaneous. And when the three other ladies and myself served that eviction, I guess Jim Horton, our officer, was there with a side iron or whatever somebody called it. But that was nowhere in our consciousness at that point. Pardon me?
Tell him not to...
I wasn't even aware of it.
Who gives Mr. Horton, Horton, what is his position?
He's the head of our enforcement division.
By authority of whom?
Of the Peal tribe of Indians, the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
And then who gives David Horton?
Well, we do.
We do. David Ramona?
I mean, he works under his own direction. He's the department head, but...
Heidi was there under your direction?
I wasn't even aware of him, you know, having his, having his side iron. He's, you know, wears the gun, but that was...
What other Indians were there with guns?
Pardon me?
What other Indians were there with guns?
At that, at that point, I'm not aware of anyone else being there with a gun. I don't think anyone was.
I'm not talking about that point. I'm talking about, how many people were there with guns that night, not at that point?
I don't know.
You don't know? Were you in charge?
I was in meetings.
What is your official position?
I'm the chairwoman of the tribe. Just a second. If Horton had a gun, I'm kind of believing what other people are saying, you know. Like, somebody said Horton had a gun, so I assume he had a gun. I never even saw him have a gun, so I, you know. I'm taking someone else's word for it. No, I didn't see it, but, you know, he does, he does wear a gun sometimes, and someone said that he had one. I guess it was Mr. Callahan who wasn't even there.
You were in charge, you were in charge for the co-operation for the tribe under the direction of a three to two vote, three to nothing vote, with two outstanding.
Yes, that would be right.
And you had no knowledge that there were guns there, and you had no control over the people that had guns.
And I was, I was involved in housekeeping responsibilities, political responsibilities of just establishing these contacts. I was in meetings for a week solid, you know, constantly in meetings. I saw more of Milk Birdman probably during that week than I saw of anyone.
All right, we're not going to talk this week. What other Indians or Indian groups were present? First, can you tell me how many of the Peal were present?
I would estimate that there were some seven hundred Indian people in that facility at different points during the week.
At that point, not...
And I, and I, no...
The night that you took over the facility, how many were there with jobs?
I don't know. And I don't have actual count.
Twenty people there with jobs. Next question would be, how many are enrolled in the Peal tribe?
Currently, the current enrollment is a thousand ninety-five.
According to the Bureau of Indian Affairs, at seven twenty-two seventy, there are four hundred and fifty enrolled in the Peal tribe.
That's not accurate.
You challenge the Bureau of Indian Affairs.
Well, sure. No, they have, they have substantially more birth certificates and applications than that. And the figure of twenty is also inaccurate. I would also challenge that figure.
There was a, there was a... The Bureau said in nineteen seventy-two, there were nineteen thousand men in the state of Washington. You were sentenced to the thirty-fiveth. You were already been asked, why were the children held as hostages? They were held hostage because you would not believe them. And you never answered other than you give a general answer.
No, they were never held as hostages.
Well, it was impossible for the employees to get them out of the prison. Somebody was holding them. They weren't staying there because the employees wanted them to stay. The employees wanted to move them out where they would be safe. Their first concern is more than the children, and their care. You didn't answer that. You went off running with the regionalizing program.
No, that isn't when I rambled off on a regionalization program. That's when I rambled off and told you that, that I was, I was talking to this gentleman, Simstra, and then talking with Milk Birdman. And at that point, we started trying to negotiate the kids back into the facility.
Even though the Indians were killed.
Well, the state was trying to negotiate the Indian people out. And we were trying to just get a commitment, you know, so that we would be able to leave.
What is the intention of the tribe, what is the intention of the damage caused by the tribe?
What is the intention of the state concerning the destruction that has been done to our tribe and to our people by the loss of this facility? You know, these are, you know, we're not talking to the state about damages. We're not talking about suing the state or the federal government for a deprivation. We're talking about a rightful return of a property that is rightfully a tribal property. You know, we're not being insane with you, and we would hope that you would have as much respect for ourselves.
Ramona, it's last chance man wrongly illegally repossessed my house. I can't repaint their building cars without expecting to, you know, I can take them to court.
Yeah, well, you can, you know, you can, and that's a different...
I don't know the difference. I've talked to guys like Dela Cruz.
You mean Dela Cruz?
Yeah.
Well, he's cute too.
You've got to hire a cute lawyer.
Well, you have a cute lawyer.
Where are the radios that were stolen from yesterday?
I don't know.
You have any responsibility there?
I had no radio.
You have admitted that...
And I had no keys.
You have admitted that you were in charge. And as the person in charge, you are responsible.
That would be correct, but I still have no idea where those properties might be.
What about the keys?
I have no keys. I had no keys.
I didn't ask you if they had the keys. I said, what about the keys?
I don't know. I didn't have any keys. I don't know where the keys are. I can't guarantee the return. It's something that I don't have.
You signed in the grave under Mr. Birdman, and what you indicated is that nobody would be prosecuted.
This is valid as the government...
And what you indicated is that there would be no Indian or tribal member prosecuted.
I guaranteed that?
Pardon?
You just said I guaranteed that no...
Yeah, apparently that's what the agreement indicated. You very carefully left out the sympathizers that were present with you at the institution. They all may be prosecuted because you let them out. And you're saying that only the Indian, is this correct?
Pardon me? What did you just say?
Sympathizers, non-Indians that you had with you.
Well, why don't you read that?
And they prosecuted, is this correct, Senator?
See, you know, that was written, you know, at five minutes to twelve, when federal marshals with rocket launchers were supposed to start bombing on us in a few minutes. Now, if we left out a couple of words, you know, we, you know, we did manage to finalize an agreement without, you know, any, any serious destruction to property or life. I would, I would not call you the wolf. I would have... Yes, sir.
The regionalization, the program with respect to all the...
Pardon me?
The regionalization of the diagnostic services with respect to the program of the state not only, not just as a relation with the Indian...
Right, right. All citizens.
I answered from your, from your conversation, this is one of the paramount concerns in your mind, that and the property.
That would be correct.
I note that in the tribal resolution dated the twenty-second, which was a date prior to the seizure of the property, no mention of any concern with respect to the diagnostic facility and its use for this. I note only that it pertains to the property.
That would be correct.
Number seventy-six, ten, twenty-three.
That's right.
I note also that the agreement entered into on the thirty-first October between the tribe and the United States state of Washington also makes no reference whatsoever to the diagnostic centers for the concept of regionalization to part of any concern for the children of the state.
That would be correct.
It pertains to the question of property also.
You see, that was not, that was not pertinent to those resolutions.
Two items that were left out of your consideration at any point, except now, if you appear.
No, sir. I would, I would welcome you to contact Yates or Duncan or any of the fine gentlemen on the federal committees and ask them what we've, what we've said about the rights of the children of this state. You'll find this is not a new issue.
It may not be a new issue, but I don't think, what I'm saying is, it's my impression that this was not primary purpose or really had anything to do with the state.
It had everything to do with it. So much to do with it.
Property rights, rather than the children, that's my impression on the...
No, that would not be right. You know, we, we work with the product of this kind of isolation. You know, we take children that are very damaged from this juvenile correction system and, and work at educating them and at getting them well, getting them emotionally healthy after, after they've gone through, through a series of moves. You know, it's something that's on our minds all of the time.
What I'm saying in effect is that my judgment, from what I've heard here, excuse me, what you said, from my observation of the resolution, from my observation of the agreement, it was consummated is that the purpose of the takeover had to do with respect to the question of property rights, even though you, as well as all of us and all citizens in the state, I'm sure, have a concern with the care of children.
Property rights, property rights were the only issues that, that could be covered in those kinds of documents. I have no leverage to force you into a future responsible action concerning these children, you know, these juveniles in the state. I have no leverage whatsoever. Maybe, maybe we had no leverage, you know, on the other issue outside of a direct court action or, or an action that, that, that just caused a lot of bloodshed and resulted in, in some kind of a conscience someplace being raised. You know, there was no leverage, you know, what, you know, what could we tell you? What could we negotiate?
What I'm saying, I guess, is that it seems very cleverly, I might say in my report, to be confusing the issues.
The issues are joint issues. There is a facility that's desperately needed for a variety of health services. It's currently not being used for an HEW function. It's being used for a law enforcement function. It's being used as a max security facility instead of a health, education, and welfare facility. A health, education, and welfare kind of a program is needed, you know, but, but it cannot be coupled with that kind of isolation. So every time, you know, there is a tragedy, an unnecessary death within our community, you know, we're looking at that building that needs to be used for health purposes, and it's being used for a jail, you know. And, and every time both of those things go through our heads, every time we visit a child there, you know, a child who's sick and they're being held in a jail, you know, that's in our heads. You know, it's always in our heads that it was meant for health and it's not being used for health.
All I'm saying is, I get the feeling that the purpose of the seizure was to take over the prosecution, settle the question of property rights.
It was to bring relief to two neglected segments of the population, the Indian people and the juveniles, both. Those go together. Well, there are things we could never prove to you.
I understand when you were, when you were answering Senator Martin's question, you said that maybe that's where they have a little bloodshed to bring it to the attention that they're wrong someplace.
No, you picked up on what you wanted to hear. That's not even what I, what I was saying. I said we could do one of two irresponsible kinds of actions, you know. We could have just, you know, gone for a suit or once in that building, you know, could have just, you know, forced some kind of an awful situation. We did neither. We did neither of those things. I mean, all of those things are possibilities, you know, but...
In my hand, I have the agreement, whereas on July thirty-ninety-four, the Peal tribal council passed the resolution authorizing the Peal tribal council, five of its members, the Peal tribal council passed the resolution. The Yule tribal council passed the resolution authorizing the Yule tribal council of five elected members. To execute abuse of the man. This was the reason for the general meeting of the day. Eleven twenty-three seventy-six, letter S sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Enrolle two thirty-five. What is your number in charge?
Thirteen.
Uh, and he, uh, in which he says that any demonstration, participation in the name of the Yule tribe should be ordered on by tribal members and not council members, whose recent vote has not been answered. Two abstained. Annual general meetings have not been called, have not been held, the chairman changed or canceled consultations, preventing other members from attending, knowing and using radical tactics. What are the council afraid of in their own tribal members that you not called general meeting? Now, if they had a general meeting at the time they authorized, and you were not running the council that time.
No, I understand.
At the time they authorized the council from the general meeting to execute the contract. Now, if you desired to, senators within his kids take legal actions, you could have called a general meeting and taken the legal actions, rather than endangering, with a great problem of a bloodshed and endangering all the children that is speaking, some of whom were Indians, that were incarcerated there, there for peace.
Mhm.
These senators sitting here have been friends of the Indians and many are friends.
Mhm.
No way can we condone the actions of armed intervention and taking over this teaching with our children without-
You, you might-
And according back to the way you mean, maybe the appropriate actions would have to be taken.
Okay, you, you might also, uh, you know, have read into the record that, uh, that that conveyance in no way waived, um, the members' rights to health services, uh, on those grounds and in those facilities, uh, and, and also, um, that the continuing employment was, uh, was part of that and that it was only to be used for Indian health sanatorium purposes and, uh, you know, I've, uh, I've seen, I've seen quite a few things in the paper, uh, about yourself and, and I didn't bring any of those clippings because, because I think that we all have people who, uh, vote within our districts or within our constituencies that, that see things a different way. Um, but, but as elected representatives, you know, I really don't think that we, uh, should be challenging, uh, each other's authority to be seeking for the people that were elected to represent.
I'm not challenging them. I just, I'm reading, receiving here what the tribal member said, and, uh, they apparently were the signers of this agreement.
Now, her-
Was it sixty-eight the signer?
Yes, her, her father was, uh, a party to that.
Well aware.
Yes, she certainly was.
I believe that probably that there'll be a general meeting, maybe a change in the council members for sure, but I don't know. I'm not, I'm in the tribe.
While we're on that, and I would like to know why we got to meet here is if we're dealing with tribal lands here, why is it being, um, why is it stated on it? Shouldn't it be settled with the state?
Whether or not it is tribal land or not.
And if it's a lawful matter, not an unlawful matter. Senator Marks, what would Ramona, would you like to tell us, uh, what you believe that the agreement which is negotiated does for you or what the procedure will be now with respect to the program?
We, um, we were able to secure a commitment, a verbal commitment, a written commitment from, uh, parties representing H E W and the Department of Interior that they would give a fair reading, a fair legal reading to this case. Um, and not, not mentioned, uh, in those documents is, well, possibly it is, uh, some procedural release, um, some administrative release that would, uh, that would deprave the laws to the state of that facility. Um, I'm, I'm not certain if that's fair. Now, I haven't looked at that document since the day we left that facility. Um, there, there were some guarantees that they would not just be, um, rounding us up or picking us up, um, just, just, uh, generally going out and stopping all cars with Indians and them and, and just, you know, doing some on the street harassment to reprise them.
Possibility of illegal action in the future with respect to this program?
Yes, with the federal government, uh, either, either filing the case or the tribe filing and the federal government, um, filing also, unless, unless the procedural release can happen, unless the state government, um, you know, comes to terms with the actual legal status and, um, you know, negotiates a, a settlement outside of court, you know, which is probably what needs to happen.
Thank you, Ramona. Burden?
No, Burden, Secretary of Department of Social and Health Services. I've just distributed to, uh, Mr. Lang and, uh, copies of, uh, various documents. You've referred to many of them. You have, uh, several others from, um, several of them you have duplicated in the, uh, material you've been discussing so far and, uh, you, I might just run through the list because, uh, that would tell you what they're about. Uh, maybe before I do that, uh, Mr. Chairman, because I would find it more useful if, uh, perhaps I can make a short saving and respond to questions, uh, late into the hour and all. There, there are three issues. You've been hearing all three of them and I think that, uh, uh, by way of very brief summary, the first issue is the episode itself, what we did that evening, what happened as a result of the occupation that week and, uh, what the culmination of that is and what the subsequent events are. Excuse me. The second issue, uh, these are not necessarily in order, is the fact that there is a very complicated history to the transaction of that property, which has been the subject of recent legal research, uh, subject of previous, uh, legal research, and there are a lot of, uh, questions, uh, some of which go back to the Treaty of Medicine Creek, eighteen fifty-four, as I've been led to believe. The third issue is the question of, uh, the proper administration of the diagnostic, uh, and treatment function that Cascade, you know, represents and, uh, what state action should be with reference to, uh, whatever the appropriate, uh, diagnostic and treatment function is. All three of these issues are sort of threaded through the testimony and threaded through the, uh, actions that happened. Uh, the, uh, I wanted to particularly, just for a moment, dwell on the last issue and that's the question of, uh, central diagnostic reception versus, uh, decentralized, uh, diagnosis and reception, because that issue really arose before the, we were aware of the Pualip interest in the land, or at least before the Pualip interest in the land reached, uh, the, uh, degree of interest that, uh, has become public now.
It arose before.
That's right. The, the general issue of-
Up to your attention by Ramona Bennett?
No, no. The, the, uh, law, even before I came to my present job in Washington, the, um, this is three and a half years now, uh, the, um, question of decentralized, essentially, the central diagnostic processing had come up to the point where there were plans and the legislature had approved and the executive branch had approved, the establishment of, um, decentralized diagnostic units on a pilot basis. They still exist today in three counties. Uh, there was, uh, all along, a consideration of a plan of the relative virtues of decentralized versus, uh, centralized diagnosis. It happened to, uh, revive itself again at the time of this episode, but it long predated this episode. Uh, it long predated, it predated the, uh, it was fair, uh, two years ago when, um, the, uh, governor's office expressed that this is what was happening with the Pualip interests. Uh, I want to make reference particularly to the, uh, uh, the episode and sort of pick up from Mr. Callahan's, uh, testimony and also, uh, part of it, uh, being responsive to, uh, the discussions with, uh, uh, Ramona Bennett. And that is that, uh, during those particular days of the, of the episode and beginning of Saturday night on October twenty-third, uh, there were some major considerations and a situation which, uh, isn't entirely unprecedented because the events occasionally like this have happened, somewhat like these, have happened on very rare occasions. Whenever they do happen, they have a unique character of their own. Uh, there's no book to go by, there never will be a book to go by, and some of the questions you asked earlier about, uh, what are the instructions, uh, should it happen again, I think, uh, are, uh, questions that can't be answered in the sense that a manual would be issued. It would be lies, uh, the handling of an episode of that relies on the individual judgment of people, the individual ju, individual judgment of staff who that night responded very, very admirably, the individual judgment, the, of some of the people who participated in the occupation and, uh, who, uh, participated in a way that I do not condone, but at the same time, with an amount of restraint that prevented any, uh, violence from taking place, and I've said that openly and I'll say it again. So, there were judgment factors that were, uh, taking place, judgment factors on the part of the Tacoma Police Department, which I think were correct and, uh, which did result in, uh, a need for establishment of a certain amount of time for everybody to know what was really going on, bearing in mind that there, the switchboard was now being manned by someone who is not a member of the, uh, staff, bearing in mind that there was a refusal to converse with some people, so a good deal of confusion, and under the circumstances, I think the very fact that that evening ended and the subsequent, subsequent week ended without any, uh, acts of, uh, well, I can't say without any act because of the one you identified, uh, took place. I don't know what the real facts are. I guess not everybody, anybody does at this point, uh, but it was substantially without any acts of violence. I think it's a credit to everybody, uh, involved, most particularly the, uh, staff who had to participate under those, uh, circumstances, some outside and some inside the facility. Uh, I would stress that very, very strongly because, uh, those episodes, and I've been, had a particular occupational history that's, uh, made me part of them in other settings and so has, uh, Mr. Callahan and so has Mr. Vincent, and I think, uh, we're all aware of the, uh, extreme potential in that kind of a situation and the fact that it's ended with the restraint that was occupied by everybody's support, and I want to stress that very, very much. Uh, as far as the events that took place, Mr. Callahan has, uh, re, has, uh, recited the events of that evening accurately, uh, subsequent to that evening and Sunday, and, uh, I would just add to the discussion of Sunday, one other factor. It is true that the decision was made on the part of the Pualip leadership not to continue the movement of the children, as we understood, because of the concern that some of them are going to, uh, Western State. Uh, it is true that the statement was made, and I was responsible for part of that statement, that it was none of their business, and I still say that, uh, that, uh, that our responsibility was to, uh, take care of the situation as, uh, promptly as we could. It is also true that the later movement on Sunday was deferred at my suggestion, because, uh, Ms. Bennett has indicated, on the possibility, because at that time, for the first time, she had indicated the desire to talk with me about what the, um, uh, situation was, to negotiate and discuss what could happen, and it was my hope at that point, that with the first opportunity to participate in discussion, that there would be a possibility to, in effect, an immediate solution, and on that basis, to have the Pualip people leave and to have the children return. And she is accurate in stating that that was the motivation at the time. As things turned out, the conditions under which, uh, that was proposed as possible were unacceptable to me, and with that in mind, uh, I had indicated that we probably, or that we would, uh, be proceeding with, uh, securing relief through court by way of asking for a temporary restraining order, uh, requiring the, um, occupational, uh, occupation group to leave, which we did proceed to do on Monday, as you recall, was a holiday. It was, uh, our version of Veterans Day. It was on October twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth, um, and so the federal court was, uh, uh, reached on Tuesday, and at that, by that time, we, by understanding that we were not going to be able to reach a settlement short of, uh, this kind of relief, the arrangements were made to remove the children. The rest of the week was spent in, again, attempting to effect a peaceful solution. Uh, the court deadline was about to pass, uh, the request was made that, uh, for a continuance of a day in order to seek the conference with the federal officials who, uh, then proceeded to join us, uh, Mr. Kelly from H E W and Mr. Ickes from the Department of Interior, and, uh, the short of it is, after all of that, uh, the agreement before you was reached. Uh, that's about the essence of the story. You've read the agreement and you've heard the different parts about it. Uh, the packet that I distrib, distributed, uh, as they say, some of you have before, just to, uh, let the other people know what, what is in it. Uh, one attachment is the historical background to all of the Cascade events and the, uh, history of the, uh, complexities of the property transfer. I won't try to recite them here, but I'm here to answer questions about that, and Mr. Mattson, uh, who was, uh, formerly chief of our legal staff and now Deputy Secretary for the department, can answer any further legal questions about that. The description of the episode, which you've heard in, uh, brief, uh, here this evening, but it's in contained in a little more detail, uh, the legal documents of the complaint and the temporary restraining order and the preliminary injunction, the agreement, uh, that we've just referred to here and the statements on, uh, subsequent events that have taken place since the agreement. Uh, the subsequent events, in short, uh, are virtually none. Uh, the, uh, temporary restraining order has been turned into a preliminary injunction. Uh, the case is still before the federal court and may, and I'm not an attorney, but I would say may possibly be argued on the merits of the property ownership. I don't know if it will be or not. Uh, the, um, uh-
What you're saying is that armed intervention can be argued on the basis of property ownership?
No, 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 no. Uh, excuse me, Senator. I said that the case before the federal court in Seattle may be argued on the merits of the, of the, um, property ownership itself. The court order ending the intervention is in effect and they have complied with that part of the court order, which said that by the deadline of noon Saturday on, uh, October thirtieth, they left the property, which they did. Uh, the, uh, uh, rest of the court order does speak to the question of restoration of damages, and you've been discussing that, and that was contained in the court order. What remains before the court with the possibility of being litigated is the quest, is the substantive question of who owns the property? And, uh, whether that ever comes to, uh, litigation in court or not, I'm not sure to say. Uh, there are lawyers here who can make a better guess at that than me.
The only thing before the court that you don't intend is the rest of the property?
And the question-
Not the criminal activity?
No, the criminal activity is not before the court. The, the, as part of the agreement, and I would stress this, the agreement included the provision that we would not indicate, uh, initiate prosecution for any of the events, incidents of the takeover, individual criminal acts accepted. In other words, that does not free the prosecution of some individual criminal act that might have taken place, uh, anywhere during the course of the week that had nothing to do with the actual taking over of the institution. We didn't know-
Prosecution is open yet.
On individual criminal act, if any.
On all, you're, you're not prosecutor, prosecutor here in, here in town, you can do anything you want.
That's understood.
But you, you're not the position to prosecute anyone.
Well, we're the, we're the position to ask for complaint.
You have to write letters, please, uh, prosecute, but if you don't need to do that, prosecute, it takes your own initiative.
That was understood.
And prosecute, everybody will want to-
That was understood.
Or anybody knows what you agreed to.
Yeah, that, that was discussed, that, that was discussed in the course of the agreement.
Somebody stole my car and I wrote the letter to them saying I won't, uh, initiate prosecution, doesn't mean the prosecution will prosecute.
Right. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, um, Senators, uh, I think the most reasonable thing for me to do at this point would be to stop the question.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Senator, uh, given the complaint you have up there here, your, Mr. Attorney General, uh, Mount Keaton, the third item you asked for in the complaint is the Declaration of Quiet Title. Uh, do you intend to, to maintain that position, you are asking for a quiet title proceeding, or are you going to, uh, change your prayer for relief and delete that?
I'd like to defer a little bit, Mr. Mattson, answer that if I can, uh.
You would amend your complaint?
I, I have not, I have not submitted yet. That could be a possibility, but I, I don't, I, I think one of our problems is, is do we have all the necessary parties to shoot the record package for this? We're acting under a D from the federal government, that they have to be in the party.
Right, but all your evidence, uh, has to be, we've been, uh, uh, right, you're adding the quiet title.
Yes.
That means-
I, I have no present plan of changing that precedent.
Uh, that's, uh, in the D from the federal government, perhaps if they have, uh, Mr. Mattson, uh, uh, to the state of Washington, there is a power of reversion. Uh, one that, uh, either carry cross or, uh, 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 there is no language in there saying, or any parts thereof. My question is, my, uh, hand, I think that once you on revert, parts of the property, either all or nothing. We, we, you probably were aware of the bill we passed, uh, passed inside of the second life pipeline around Fort Lost for the city of Seattle. And I've signed the power and the automatic reversion in that. Any portion of that we're not going to use for, uh, part purposes, I doubt whether we can just take that in either, or all or nothing.
Well, I'm not sure that you're correct there, Senator Woody. I'm, I'm also not sure that you're incorrect. It, it, you know, it does seem to me that there is a possibility of some identifiable portion. It gets very dangerous when you talk about this kind of thing. I, I recognize because you obviously have to have space surrounding an institution. You have to have some kinds of spaces. Uh, but I, I, you know, I'd just say that a flat rule that you couldn't revert part under the power of reverter contained in the quitclaim deed between H E W and the state of Washington, I think is, your judgment, your research might be better than mine, but I wouldn't say that I could make that kind of a possibility. Well, I understand that. I understand that and that's why the mechanism was used in the negotiations, the, the mechanism of not contesting. I have little doubt that if there were a con- contest, if we had not agreed not to contest and H E W had come out of the blue and said this and doing, they would have no prayer of, of making a case for reverter.
But if, uh, you are, uh, put it another way, if I'm correct, you can't opt under the title provisions here, revert only a portion of it, then Article five, section eight of the Constitution says you can't make the end of state property. We've got some title interest within that property at this point. And you can't give it even to federal government under Article five, section eight.
No, that, that may be, that may be incorrect, uh, Senator. Uh, and I, there are, there is case law, as you know, about the relationship of Article five, section eight as it relates to other governmental entities. And I think that basically, uh-
Well, state governmental entity, there's no question here, federal government, uh, entity, I was looking at the, the, um, uh, request of Lieutenant McDermott to the Attorney General's office and the reply at April fourth, nineteen seventy-six, which indicates that, uh, before, that, uh, uh, before the, uh, the portion of title of the federal government is concerned, there has to be a determination of surplus property by the Superior Court here of Pierce County.
Well, any portion. I, I, you're reading a little more into that opinion than, than I think is there. What's your, uh, uh, there's no question, but what, there are two ways to, to transfer real property, uh, within the state, it seems to me. One is for fair market value and that's cut and dried. You can transfer property for fair market value. There's several exceptions to when you can get less than fair market value for part purposes and things like that. The other one is on a transfer to the federal government is that you can do it through the mechanism described in that opinion.
Which was not done-
And which was not done here, no. For this, for this strip of land that is part of the agreement.
So that everybody understands that what has been done may not be-
Well, may not be what, Senator?
Well, you, it may not be a, a portion of the property that you have attempted to revert to the United States, it may not have reverted.
Hmm. Well, I, you know, I'd, I'd argue that with you, uh, Senator, but, you know, I, I'm, I'm certainly aware that there are other legal opinions on that issue.
Uh, Senator, if I may say, 'cause I was part of that, that evening, uh, at that session, uh, I was, uh, in the, uh, company consultation of three attorneys, uh, two from the state, one from the federal government. Uh, I guess that's right, three, and, uh, the issue came up, uh, as, uh, part of the action that was taken and, uh, I would, uh, have to take the responsibility for it, uh, was based on legal, it was a valid, uh, a valid action. Now, the action being-
I question somebody told you the process?
Of course. The action, the action being that if that portion of the property was declared surplus to its present use as a juvenile facility, that it could, that it would be proper for the federal government to request the reversion and we would not oppose that. And in, in effect, let me say this, aside from all the legal language, the fact is that it was a piece of property that was not usable by us.
The whole agreement is not valid, you were under duress, you know, hijacked or something like that.
That's not true, Senator.
So there was nothing in the agreement to define the license, but for anybody else?
Uh, that, that- Well, certainly a feeling. I think, I think one of the- About what?
Well, the Indians taking all of the, the insurrection over there and he-
Well, he, he was disturbed by it as always were.
I think it's made government?
Oh, with the whole, well, I'm sure. And what, they're going, what, now this isn't happening? Reverting, uh, uh, the testimony here, there are no radio, uh, uh, the department, uh, uh, uh.
Oh, uh, the, the absence of the radios, I don't consider, uh, a, uh, absolutely crucial, uh, part of the security institution, Senator. I think the radios will be replaced as some of the other property will, the, uh, uh, within the week.
What about the lock?
The lock? The, uh, what, what about the lock?
The, the, what about the lock, uh, and the keys? Are, are, are all the locks going to be changed, uh, here around the place again?
Well, the, the way that'll work, Senator, Mr. Callahan is the superintendent of the institution. He's a very competent superintendent. We would rely on his judgment and take his recommendations. As he indicated, they are, uh, uh, making the kinds of analysis that would, uh, try to keep, uh, the remedial action within reasonable, uh, bounds as far as the, uh, uh, cost is concerned. In any case, uh, the, uh, action on the lock will be, uh, subject to his recommendation, our re- our response.
How long has it been since that happened?
The, the incident started October twenty-third, concluded on October thirtieth.
And this is now November the thirtieth?
This, this is.
And the department has taken no positive action regarding security there?
No, that, that's not true, Senator. The, the department has, uh-
Well, you heard the gentleman say there was no radio in the place, uh, and, uh, the lock's not been changed.
I said that it's not true that the department has taken no action.
Well, it's been off a coast and no action. What are you going to do in the future with security? You heard testimony that the police are not going to help you out there. What are you going to do?
No, I, I didn't hear testimony that the police are not going to help us, Senator. I said that, I heard testimony that the police had indicated that they didn't, ex- ex- that they didn't feel that the patrolling of that facility was their responsibility. I disagree with that. Uh, I think that, uh, Senator Woody pointed out, I think that, uh, a property which is in city property is subject to help. I think, as I said earlier, that the Tacoma police acted wisely at the time and not rushing in with force and, uh, making an assessment of the situation and acting in concert with Mr. Callahan. As far as the future, Senator Asmussen, the, uh, you know, the, these episodes are unique and each one. I, I for one would never propose an institution like that be armed. I think it would be foolhardy for an institution of, uh, children to be armed under any circumstances. And, uh, I would oppose very seriously any effort to arm that institution. I think the, the institution has functioned successfully with very good staff and good direction over many years. They've had a very, very good record on, uh, low escapes, uh, in spite of some of the testimony here tonight. They've had a very good record on, uh, serving their function. A single episode like this is very unfortunate. I don't think anybody that I'm responsibly connected with condones it. Uh, the, uh, the best protection against that is the good judgment of people that handle that. And this is what we're trying to work on. Uh, short of that, uh, I think, uh, the, uh, taking any other drastic action and reckless arming, I would oppose. The best action we can do-
We have no concerns that people are roaming around there with carrying guns, either over, or-
Of course, of course I have concerns about that.
Uh, would you think that would fit along?
Of course not.
But, Senator, but obviously some, the department, what are you going to do about it?
Try to respond with, uh, building the kind of judgment that can handle any situation like that. In my opinion, good judgment and good system exceeds the value of arms in that situation and radio.
Well, we're, uh, showing this out there, it could have been a terrible situation. It was, they were beyond the control. Mona Benet satisfied that he had no control over the people with guns. You had no control over them. Now, it was a very dangerous situation. The solution would be to see that nobody gets out on grounds with guns.
I agree.
And, uh, and the task force is working on it.
Not to prevent anybody entering the grounds with guns. We have, we have constant attention to making sure that the opportunities for that are limited.
Senator Woody, Senator Martin, what do you think about the idea of, uh, of, uh, the task force, the least, uh, law officer, the, uh, sheriff of, of Pierce County and the youth of, uh, of Tacoma, together and sort of decide what they would do in the future if that occurred, because it might be a model for other communities. I've got Monroe and the forecourt in my area and nothing happens, it goes higher. But, uh, you know, I think there are four members of the police force in Monroe. Two of them are on duty at any one time.
I think that's reasonable, Senator Woody. I think the, any responsible leadership for running an institution or a set of institutions should constantly be thinking about in advance, be thinking about the kinds of things you're talking about. Again, specifically to build in elements of the best possible judgment and the best possible cooperation. And the degree to which that's done in advance, uh, is helpful. I think it's a good idea.
The thing about it, uh, is, uh, kids who are locked up who were residents, or what they're, were doing many of the things which apparently allowed them to pass with respect to the tribe. Does it foster upon their heart, um, various and sundry other groups, the type of action that was taken there in this case?
You mean the fact of freeing from our complaining for the prosecution? Is, is, what you're saying is that? This is, this is the risk that's taken in every one of these situations, whether it's a presidential pardon for certain acts, whether it's a, um, whether it's a, uh, dealing in a strike situation, which often in these kinds of atmospheres are granted. I think the risk factor that you raise is constantly in everybody's mind, that if you exempt the people from re- retributory action, are you encouraging other people to take the same action? Uh, in my opinion, probably not. I, I personally don't think that that, uh, particular act is necessarily going to encourage very, uh, further action. That's my opinion. You have to weigh that as against the other consequences of not doing it. It's a legitimate question and the best I can give you is my, uh, opinion, that I don't think that that's a major contributory factor to further action.
In the agreement, under item three, we asked the Secretary of the Department of Interior to review the deed and make a decision. If the deed is valid, and if the state is probably subject to terms of the deed. Is that subject to review or is the implication that it is not?
Oh, it is subject to review. The, the finding by an attorney on the staff of the Secretary of the Interior or the staff of the Secretary of H E W, I think it was implied that too, or stated, uh, doesn't necessarily bind us, it's a, it's a court finding.
I'm wondering, I, I want to clearly say to them that there's no intention on your part, except the finding of the department, without review by someone?
That's correct, that we intend to review it. We have indicated in the course of, uh, all of these discussions, and this is why this becomes very important, that we have indicated we will consider it very seriously. And one of the things we have also indicated, and this was discussed in the course of the negotiations, is that should the finding move in that direction or even should it not move in that direction? That our intention in any case was to eventually plan towards a decentralization of the diagnostic process and eventually the movement of that from Cascadia. We also said, and this is what I would repeat very strongly because the people from the, uh, Pualup tribe heard me say this, and that is one of the things that stalled the negotiations for a lo- so long, that any movement in that direction would require the concurrence of the legislature. And that was said from the very beginning. That was understood from the very beginning and that was one of the things that required the protective negotiation always. So that was understood. In short, that should the ruling be in favor of reversion to the federal government, that wouldn't bind us legally. We could, uh, that's just an opinion of one attorney or two attorneys, and you've heard already here tonight how attorney's opinions can differ. That in any event, we would like and we would plan to decentralize the operation to, uh, place before the legislature. We're planning for this. This is why the acquisition of the one point seven million dollars becomes so important. Yes, sir.
The event that the Department of, the, the finding of the, the deed was not valid?
The Department of Interior?
Department of Interior.
All right.
Would you report that to the legislature before taking action?
Well, absolutely. That's who we'd have them.
Action on your part entail a, an indication to the legislature with respect to what you respond to?
I, I'm, I, I didn't follow that.
You asked legislative members to present the question. What should we do about it or should we merely report?
So I, what I would plan to do, if it were me, which, uh, raises another question by the time it happens, uh, in fact with an answer, uh, what I would recommend to whoever is the secretary, including myself, is that the plan be placed before the legislature, which we would do in any event, including our response to the ruling by the legal staff of the Department of the Interior, including hopefully our acquisition of sufficient money to relinquish our interest, that I would then, or recommend to whoever is representing the department, to place before the legislature a plan for legislative approval, which would include within it the plan for the eventual decentralization and movement of diagnostic process, which incidentally would be consistent with what we've been talking about for some years in any case.
Section five, it applies also to this deed were found valid, it applies with the same, but again, the deed with the turning over to the federal property for company.
Exactly, with the concurrence of the legislature. Absolutely, absolutely. This, uh, as I indicated, Senator, this, it was this one line that, uh, almost, uh, had us failed with the negotiations, but that was understood all the way through.
Um, uh, the radio is going to be replaced?
Yes, sir.
In the week, the locks are going to be ran?
Uh, the locks will depend on Mr. Callahan's, uh, report and recommendations and our reaction to them. I think it's a more complicated question.
Well, let, let's get to reaction right now. This is the legislature sitting here. We want to know what's going to be done to secure, to make this, this institution secure for the section of the country.
Well, Senator, since the event has happened, the children are secure, the locks are being examined, the work is being done by Mr. Callahan and Mr. Netherlands, the assistant, uh, uh, director of the bureau has, uh, been involved and the, uh, recommendations for all of the matters are, they are going to be, uh, reviewed and, uh, the proper actions will be taken consistent with the, uh, proper expenditure of state money. I, I can't tell you tonight what Mr. Callahan's recommendations are finally going to be. But they, they will, uh, you know-
Well, what would your recommendation be if you were in the institution and there were master keys to the institution that had not been returned?
I would make an examination of the locks. I'd make a determination of whether they could be changed. I'd realize that, uh, if they were, that the same keys might be duplicated. I'd realize also that even if you replaced all the locks, that that doesn't make for total security. I'd examine all of the- make for total security. I'd examine all of the conditions that have been followed, make an appropriate recommendation within the constraints of money. I, I personally don't anticipate that the, uh, changing of the locks is in and of itself going to make all that difference. But I, we, I would rely on Mr. Callahan's judgment and...
The department has in mind any plan with respect to the types of equipment we're now in front of, is there?
You mean if we do make the movement? Oh, with the types that are there now, while we still have the facility, Senator Marticich, we would, uh, maintain our present program. The, I wanted to, uh, maybe it did come out in the earlier testimony, I'm not sure, uh, Cascadia is not just a diagnostic, diagnostic and reception center. There's a small unit there for handling special problems, and I think it's in the range of somewhere between twenty and thirty, uh, people at any one time in that general range that are there for, uh, full programming, not just the diagnostic, uh, process. It's also a unit for the returning and processing of parole, juvenile parole violators. The, while the status quo remains status quo, we will operate it just as we always operated it, uh, to serve that, uh, general function. If we do make the change that would require the legislative concurrence we just talked about, uh, there are various options. Uh, one option would be to go into a regional system whereby the department operated small regional units in two or three places within the state. We already have three local facilities that are doing this in pilot programs with counties. Uh, more of those could be developed. We also might, as Mr. Callahan indicated, uh, consider the possibility of using a portion of, if you use the expression, Senator Nushwonder, a western state hospital. Personally, at this moment, that doesn't sound to me like such a cool plan, and I doubt that it does to you either. But, uh, more likely it would be a general regional station, Senator Marticich, uh, with the movement. Now, the cases that are there now, the children that are there now for confinement, not for diagnosis and treatment, but for the full period of treatment, would have to be moved and would be moved to other juvenile facilities which are available. While, as Mr. Callahan indicated, the present capacity of the other juvenile facilities is full, that we are at capacity, there are other cottages which are not now staffed, which are available to be used, and if we move Cascadia staff, could be operated as, uh, facilities at, uh, the, some of the other institutions. So there is space.
We have similar properties, all for the state, for the same question, right?
Not to my knowledge. Uh... You mean because of quality title ownership possibility? I don't think so, Dick. You, I, I don't think so. There, there was one that... I know. There was one that, the one that had occurred to us at one time. I just kind of...
Well, there was some question about some portion of the land upon which western states.
That's right, yeah. The, the...
Well, no, uh, the Stellacan tribe calling itself, the Stellacan tribe of Indians, saying some portion there.
That's the only one. And, and that really doesn't take on the same character as this one. It hasn't had the recent history of it. Maybe. I haven't heard that personally, hearing from some of the, uh, uh, noise in the room. Uh, I, I hadn't heard that. I'd, I'd really be appreciative, Senator Marticich, to know the specifics of that. Uh, I, for one, have said, and I would continue to say, that I think the staff was absolutely tremendous, uh, that evening. I think they've been good all along. Uh, so down the river, and I, I wonder if you could, uh, articulate a little more in terms of the specifics, in what way?
I guess the feeling that I got was that, uh, they just felt that, uh, action taken by the department was not, uh, proper action.
Not serious enough? Well, I suppose, uh, one might take that point of view in terms of the signing of the, uh, statement that we wouldn't take any group act, against, any action against the group, uh, occupation. The, uh, as far as the other parts of the agreement, uh, having the, having the, uh, federal agencies research, uh, their own title, I think they should, they're obligated to do that anyway. They should. As far as the, uh, reversion of, uh, these five or six acres of land weighing back of the property, I don't, I wouldn't see that that would, uh, cause any concern. In terms of the availability of the office space, uh, down by the house, perhaps, because that makes part of the, uh, part of the, uh, land available to the conduct of Pualap business, I suppose it would be possible that some staff would feel that that was inappropriate. My own feeling is, uh, considering the nature of the events, uh, their participation, uh, more than anybody in the solution of the crisis, uh, on the whole, I would not think that there would be a, um, negative reaction, but I, I just haven't heard it. I don't know. No, I think it's quicker than that. Uh, the, uh, the thought at the time, the conversation went on that last day, or the, the last night and the la, the last day and night and the next morning, uh, seemed to be that they were aiming for something ahead of the first of the year. Well, no, I, I think what we would do first, Senator, if, if, they, they can't rule against us, they can rule in terms of their own, uh... If they ruled that, 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 if they can rule that they made an illegal conveyance to us, that's what they could rule, and as Ms. Bennett say, that would put us in a position if I can be called, well, having received it. No, then, then I think what we'll do, and this is what I wanted to urge before, then what we will do is look into the practicality of the federal government restoring the amount of money that we've placed into that facility, not going to court if we can help it, then coming before you with a plan in terms of both money and time. And we've emphasized this all along, that we don't think it can be done every night, overnight. Money and time. We've been more successful with the legislature than we have with some of the local communities in getting, uh, agreements. Uh, in terms of legislative response, Senator, I would say we've been successful. No, but we, we have the funding for one mini-prison. We had the authorization of Furlands. We had the, uh, authorization of planning money for four more sites. We had the authorization of, uh, three... Right. Right. Well, first of all, I think it will be a good plan. Second, I have confidence in the ultimate wisdom of the legislature recognizing that. Sir. Pardon?
You were headed for most promotion with that plan. We have a very, very valid concern that this man and that woman, she's been doing both the staff and the, uh, the children that are there have been, uh...
Agreed.
...benefited very much from the program and have it destroyed at this moment by power hungry people for no reason whatsoever, and no, no value. I personally would like to see that program destroyed.
Well, I don't... Again, Senator, I don't see this as destroying a program, uh, the, and you will have the opportunity to react to that. The, uh, I guess you already have, uh, the, but so, the rest of the legislature, the, uh, I, I would see that we, I would not, for one, propose anything that would make the program less effective. It has been an effective program. There is a serious, uh, question as to property rights there, no question about that. Uh, there, uh, there are other ways to operate that program even more effectively than it is now. We'd have to weigh all those things and bringing it before you, and if the legislature doesn't approve, they don't approve.
Uh, my name's Larry Marlat, and I'm, uh, president of local Street Sixty Eight of the West of the Washington Federation State employees. And, uh, our employees have a number of concerns. Uh, one of the first ones is that when an outside force comes in and occupies that institution by force or threat of force, employees there are held against their will. They have no recourse to that. Our employees wonder what can they do in that situation. Number two, there were a number of items that were stolen at institution, either state property, property, private property of students, private property of staff. We feel the remuneration of that should be not come from tax money, either state tax money or federal tax money, but the Pualap tribe should pay for that. Another thing that we feel very strongly about is we have a lot of unique programs in Cascadia. It's an old line staff. We have, if you go to move that program, it's going to run into a lot of problems, like we have problems with the finest affirmative action programs in the state. Okay, if you move it out of this geographical area, you're going to ruin that. And when you try to piecemeal it, it's not going to get the job done. And we feel that in the future, if this is what's going to happen, then we would like to get some input into it. Also, what is our country going to come to? Is this going to be a nation of law or a nation of anarchy? Now, where the Pualaps or whoever come in there, played up, plays over by force, hold it roughly a week, walk away scot-free. Not only walk away scot-free, you reward them for their efforts, by giving them property, by giving them a building, and until next time, if it's legally decided who owns that property, the state of Washington owns it. And how can anyone give something that belongs to we, the taxpayers, away to anybody until that claim is settled one way or the other in a court of law, not by force? And we feel these issues should be answered, and we would like them answered to them.
Well, they, uh, uh, it was about six o'clock when they took it over and they, and, um, there was, uh, there was a couple aides, but there was also, uh, and there was, uh, there was probably a sidearm on, and, uh, and, uh, one of the things that they did, they did agree to when they first, uh... Well, yeah. Well, it would be possible because, uh, I mean, it's a kind of a charge area, but... I would say so, yes.
And Ramona was there and the other.
Yes. No, I don't, no. Well, they, um, uh, they, at no time did they, did anybody ever draw a gun on me or threatened, uh, threatened me or anything else. I mean, they, because they, the nearest thing to a threat would be that, um, that they, they would be at firm, I mean, from diagnostic and treatment center. I've, uh, in compliance with your request for my appearance here, prepared a brief statement, six copies of which I presented to, to the chairman. Uh, the essence of my statement is that I have no firsthand knowledge concerning the events which led up to the Pualap incident at Cascadia on October twenty-three. The only information known to me is that which subsequently appeared in the press. Friday morning, October twenty-ninth, I received a telephone request from Washington DC at my headquarters, asking that I participate in a joint state Indian federal meeting to be convened later in that same day at the Cascadia facility. The purpose is of discussing with the tribal officials their allegations of an illegal transfer of the property to the state of Washington, and to seek a solution to the matter which would result in the tribes' compliance with the federal court order to vacate the premises by noon on Saturday, October thirty, meeting. I would consider it proper that the Department of Health, Education, Welfare and Collaboration with the Department of Interior investigate the title to ascertain whether or not the allegations by, the assertion by the tribe is correct, if there is a deed on it, on the title.
If the allegations of the tribe are incorrect, what then should be the...
Then we'll have a legal opinion to that effect. Sir, then we will assume that the transfer, if the, to be, uh, absolutely clear, uh, concerning your question, if it is the legal opinion, a joint legal opinion by the Department of Interior and the Department of H E W, that there is indeed no cloud on the transaction, then we will proceed on the assumption that our conveyance of the property by quitclaim deed in nineteen sixty-one was indeed a valid transaction, and that the state of Washington may proceed under the, uh, the original agreement, consistent with the original agreement, that it be used as a diagnostic and treatment center. I beg your pardon, sir? It was deeded in nineteen sixty-one for a period of twenty years, and the state of Washington would acquire the property at approximately five percent public benefit allowance for that twenty years, at the end of which time it would become the property of the state of Washington if it was determined by my department that it was being used, uh, consistent with the terms of the agreement. And each year, the state is required to furnish to my office in Seattle, uh, a statement with respect to utilization of the property. And we are required to do a site visit every five years, and so far, determination has been that the state has been using the property consistent with the terms of the agreement. Approximately six months ago, I believe. That the property is not being used consistent with the original purposes, no. The issue, of course, is whether or not the initial transaction was a valid transaction. And I would think that we will have an opinion sooner than later, and, and as I believe Mr. Bergman testified, uh, our commitment is that we will do it as expeditiously as possible, and I would expect that that would be a matter of public record within, within a week or ten days. Dignitary? Would you consider me a dignitary? Excuse me. The me, I'm not sure what meeting, uh... I'm not aware that I was invited, but it's conceivable that... Uh, no, sir, I'm not aware of invitation. It's been quite a while ago. Uh, no, sir, I'm not aw, I'm not aware, I was not invited, to my knowledge. It may be possible, but I, sometimes I don't get those things.
That's subject to anybody who feels they're fully agreed. Well, I'd be checking that court.
I should think so, yes, sir. These are, these are legal, this is a legal opinion, but I would emphasize that the opinions are being prepared by people who are quite familiar with tribal, uh, law and tribal transactions and our surplus property laws. So I think... Uh, no, sir, but I would again emphasize that, that the attorneys, the solicitor of the Department of Interior and the general counsel of the Department of H E W are, I think, quite competent to render an opinion in a matter of such as this. Yes, and I think, as I indicated, that will be, will be forthcoming very soon in a matter of public record.
Since that time, I left the state nineteen sixty-four. I was gone for ten years, uh, returned a couple of years ago. And so, um, I am here pretty much, uh, primarily to answer any questions that the committee may have, uh, relative to, uh, the concept of the diagnostic center at that time. Yes, sir, very much so. I was present.
All attorneys present at that time agreed that that was...
To my knowledge, the, uh, attorney general at the time, uh, handled the legal transaction, the deed. At that time, in the department, the director of the department institution was Garrett Heim, the governor was, uh, Governor Rosalina, of course, and, uh, uh, and the legislature, among others, all agreed with the concept and the... all agreed with the concept and the installation and receipt of the property from the federal government. We were notified in the normal ways that the federal government notifies governmental agency surplus property. They issue mimeograph memorandums to state, county, city government advising us that that property was available. And at the time, we made our application on the basis of the purpose, as Mr. Kelly said, for Diagnostic and Treatment Center for Juveniles. It was accepted by the surplus, by the federal government, and that's how it got started.
At that time, there was adequate publicity that practically everybody in the area knew what was going to be proposed, or the old system of Indian...
Yes, I would say so, because at the time, most of our publicity, as I recall, came from some of the neighbors feeling that we might have dangerous children there, et cetera, and that they were somewhat concerned about the location of that facility there. However, once the public meetings were held, and the program was discussed with them, it was pointed out, the whole building would be remodeled so that the building would be secure and that sort of thing. And that night of opposition quieted rather soon.
Your knowledge, that is, all of the homes, all of, all of, regardless of race, creed, or color, or origin.
Certainly, the years that I was familiar with it, sir, I'm quite...
At that time, was any progress of Indians or Indians...
Right. I don't recall any. There was some concern, as I distinctly recall, remembering that this is, we're talking sixteen, seventeen years ago, but there was some concern to make sure that Indians who were ill would be treated. At that particular time, the philosophy of health services was that they would be integrated with the health hospital facilities in the city of Tacoma and Curtis County, and that was the general nature of how that would be handled at that time, as I recall it, quite a few years ago.
It seemed that under our present segregation laws, that we could properly segregate Indians anymore than we could separate, segregate blacks for a separate institution.
That's a broad question, sir. Whatever I would respond to that would only be a personal opinion, would be hardly suitable, I think, to the committee. It would be a matter of personal philosophy, anybody who would be asked that question.
H E W would cut off all funds, sir.
Well, certainly, H E W, H E W does get back to question, and certainly insists on no discrimination, and that's quite... Does the committee have any questions, Mr. Marmon?
Senator, are you aware, if any time the Department, feeling expects the need for this building to continue to exist and to disturb you?
At this time, sir?
Right.
Again, as much as my area of responsibility now is developmental disabilities, I'm not really a part of those kinds of discussions or decisions. I have my own worries and problems, and I'm truly not getting involved in that area of the department.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Marmon.
Thank you.
And you want, Senator Martin wants to put that question to you, Mr. Bergman. Then, Mr. Marmon, you're down here, might you make a comment?
Has there been any thought on the part of the department to give up this institution? Is there, is there a feeling on the part of the department that we do not need this institution, which we're now needing?
There is no feeling on the part of the, well, you make a positive, Senator Martin. There's a feeling on the part of the department that there is a need for the Diagnostic and Holding process in Cascadia now served. We have said that we can function probably in better ways compared to what the staff and this that were expressed by the representative from the union, but there are different points of view, and I think his point is very well taken, that we shouldn't make any moves like that without involving employee groups, which we do. The feeling is that it will probably be more effective to operate the process of Cascadia by diffusing it to other areas rather than having it occupied at Cascadia. This is not anything that is yet a finished decision to express more of our particular action, as you like, Mr. Van Zandt, who's the head of that section, was here to discuss this more, but the fact is that even before the Pualap incident, we had been talking about plans for de-temperization. These have been shared with at least the administrative staff at Cascadia, that was general knowledge, awareness with employee group, to their interest and participating needs, and that...
There's been no specific time, Senator, like, for similar...
No. What's our plan for this yet? Oh, I'm sorry.
There is no...
There's nothing before you now, that's for sure.
There has, there's been in the last year.
There has not been, except to the extent that before the legislature and approved by the legislature were the three pilot companies that are sort of the prototype for what we're talking about.
Can you give a comment? Can you give any explanation in the following language in the letter of the governor that employee takes, um, another thing? If the state were fully reversed or established, Cascadia would have no objection to its trans to the United States, we have entrusted you.
Yes, that was done, I think it was approximately two years ago?
No, April eight, seven.
Seventy-five, year and a half. Then, the point at that time, Senator Marticich, and it probably should have not been omitted in the letter, but at the time, that letter was discussed, and with the Pualap tribe, Mr. Madison was aware of it at that time, because he participated then as the attorney with Mr. Doliver, representing the governor. Orally, it was indicated to the people that were involved in the transact or the negotiation that it would require the approval of the legislature, and indeed, I think that's why the Senate testified that she did have discussions with Senator Day and with Representative Adams, who is now the chairman of the Most Relevant Dissection Matter Committee, so that they did understand that it would require the approval of the legislature. Now, probably, it should have been stated in the letter, too.
Well, I'm not certain that's quite true.
Yeah, but it was, it was made clear that this would require legislative approval.
I wonder why the governor would make such a comment without presenting an alternative plan in legislature or a plan that...
Well, the expectation was that if that's what they, in the letter, it should have included the phrase with the concurrence of the legislature. Without it being included in the letter, it wasn't included in the...
Well, I have not so much the truth, the question whether the legislature would have to respond, but it's last statement that it was safely written apart, without having come to the legislature as an alternative.
Yeah.
And so, neither time required in the passage of the law, like, the planning of construction, we're talking to the three years.
Well, I think that what may have been assumed in the letter speaks to a writing of, uh, draft intention of the letter, that might have been a little less than I expected. Your statement is correct, it was inferred as a discussion, it was not stated in the letter.
I recall when that even came up, so the sent letters off to the head of the Johnson thing came through.
I'm the person, Mr. Martin. I'd like to make a statement about a couple of things with all that. Feel a little bit of like the man in the middle here, who is administratively responsible for carrying out the operation of the Bureau of Juvenile Relocation under the policies of the legislature and the Department of Social and Health Services. Only question that you ask, Mr. Bergman, Senator Martin, I think that this whole mess, if I might classify it, is that it reflects on people being led down a primrose path by receiving encouragement on the one hand, by hearing what they want to hear as another part of that, by, on the other hand, people not carrying through in a very intuitive way in terms of making those aspirations become reality. And I think that frankly, the reason that that letter was not more carefully drafted was because three things had to happen. There had to be legislative action at the congressional, U.S. congressional level to appropriate the money to carry that out. It had to come back to the state for legislative approval as well as administrative approval. And I think that probably the feeling was that the chances of all three of those things occurring were so low that it seems it would not happen. And I think that that is a fair characterization of, if not the situation, the attitudes that precipitated a great deal of this confrontation that we found ourselves in a couple of months ago. The thing that I have said to the staff in Cascadia last year when this came up, and I would say it again tonight, is that we had no specific plan to close Cascadia or to return it to the United States government as surplus property as far as the program consideration of Bureau of Juvenile Relocation, sorry. We further stated that we needed the bed space represented by the facilities at Cascadia to carry out the present program of the Bureau of Ju...